All right, so Tony, so this is technically a continuation of the meeting of last Thursday. First, and we're gonna go ahead and start, well, we're gonna go ahead and have a real call. In attendance, we have Carol, Ed, Bob, myself, and then as of now, we have Doug's absence. So we'll go ahead and we'll start with.
He just joined online.
Okay, so I need a motion.
Motion, motion for allowing Mr. Banks to fully participate in the meeting remotely due to exceptional circumstances.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you hear us, Doug?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So we'll go ahead and we'll start with Russ.
First of all, for the record, Russ Wire, Real Estate Econometrics, your assessment methodology consultant, and thank you for accommodating me. I did, I was a little bit late, but I did make my meeting last Thursday, so I appreciate that. What we're going to do is go through, this is the second part. As you know, we're doing this in, in three stages. The first part, we did the water management, which we concluded last week. Second part is the, gonna be the roadway benefit that we're going to talk about today. And then the third part, which will be next week in workshop, will be Parks and Rec and Administration. So hopefully, we'll have all of those covered by that point. And then I'll go back into the, to the work part to get that draft out by, near the end of January, but that's the goal. That's where we're going, so.
So that first meeting is where we will have a workshop first?
Yes, we always have the first, always have the meeting, the workshop, the first meeting.
December, what's the next, December 5th?
January.
Yes.
January.
No.
Oh, December 5th?
Yes.
It's November. We have a meeting in December, right?
Yes, that's a workshop.
Parks and Rec and Admin, yes, that is the next one for the workshop on December 5th.
Okay, and that'll be a workshop?
Yes, for the workshop at 2:00 on December 5th.
You heard it here first, Russ.
Thank you. I will make sure I'm here at 2:00.
Okay, and while we're on it, I remember that we canceled the meeting of the 19th while ago. So that would be the next meeting after that will be on the 2nd.
Yes.
And that will be a workshop also?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be the draft?
Can, can we not only have this?
No, that had like the third week in January, second, yeah, third week in January was when.
That was our fallback in the event you had any additional.
December's was.
Okay.
Yeah, or in the early part of January, that's correct. We had like three dates in there, if you saw my calendar.
Can, can we not only have a workshop at the next meeting, but also an agenda item in case there's something we want to hear comments from the public on also?
It will be on the 3 o'clock.
Right, but I'm asking that we also make it an agenda item on the 3 o'clock meeting? No, the workshop for us to talk.
Okay.
And then if people have comments or wanna say anything, or wanna add to the discussion, we could do that during the course of the meeting if there's an agenda item on the agenda for it.
Well, they can speak on it without being an agenda item. Unless you, unless you do want a specific topic on the agenda, then that's different. Okay, so then you just have to let us know, let Chelsea know, but, but they can speak regardless on whatever topic they want.
Okay, can we have it as an agenda item also at the 3 o'clock meeting?
Just a general assessment methodology? Yes.
Okay, so the, the second meeting in January is the one where you're bringing what appears to be a pre-final document?
That's the draft, correct. That's where we can say, here's what I heard and everything, and now it's all put together, and here's how the assessments spill out from that. And that's when we do our heavy-duty discussion and playing with.
Carol, just on clear, you're asking for that on December 5th?
Yes.
Okay. The agenda will be out tomorrow.
Is there anybody that's not gonna be here for January 2nd? Because I don't think I'll be back.
I will be here.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Doug?
Doug, will you be here January 2nd?
Uh, yes, as far as I know.
I thought we lost him.
Okay, so let's go ahead and start with.
Oh, good, go. Okay, today's agenda will be.
Bob, would you prefer that we hold off one more meeting then until you come back in January?
I would appreciate it.
Well, let's.
We're not, we're not doing anything in January 2nd relative to this, though.
Correct.
So, there's no issue here on that.
But to hear his presentation.
That's next week.
It's on the 16th.
I thought there were four.
No, 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 there's, there are three, because we did water management, we're doing roadways today, then next week will be both the Parks and Rec and Administration. Those are all in, in next week's presentation.
So we're done with all the meetings, pre-meetings at the December 2nd meeting.
So you weren't planning on presenting anything on January 2nd?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because if you looked, if you looked at the calendar, that's.
I missed that.
No, that's, that's what it said on the calendar, and then I needed a little bit of time to put it all together, because we're doing a piecemeal, but then I need to put the whole thing together, which will be the second, third week in January.
16th.
Yeah, on the 16th. That will be the, the draft, and then we'll all go through that, and then, then we'll set up the public hearings. I think is how that goes.
Okay.
All right? All right, today's agenda, we're, we're gonna look at the roadway benefit, the background on that, take a look at the budgets. We're also gonna take a look at the benefit determination measurements, and then the calculation of the assessments. And just like in the, the last, the last workshop that we had, I have questions at the end that we're not sure how the board wants to go, and that's all up to the board and the board discussion. So let's go to number three. Perfect. And the background, Gateway Service, the CDD, is we're revising the master methodology, operations and maintenance. The district's reviewing the methodology by the benefiting categories through these workshops. Today's workshop's on the roadways, and the district roadway ownership was verified by the district engineer, as, as, as was the use of the Institute of Traffic Engineers' measuring of the trip generation. That seems to be the Bible.
Russ, can you hold over one minute? I'm having trouble getting this thing up on my computer.
Oh, sure.
I think we're having the same issue.
The 11A. That's how I got there, correct. Oh, thank you.
It's on, it's on Georgia Tech's tail. I might need to do it.
Aye.
I can see it, it's right there.
I know.
So again, the, are everybody ready to go? Bob?
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect, okay. The district road ownership was verified by the district engineers, as we talked, and we'll see on the, in the next slide in a second, and then passed by rates for the ITE Trip Generation Handbook, the 11th edition. And they update that probably every couple of years. When we started out, it was like in the eighth edition, but now, what they do is they, they get more and more studies and more and more refines their, their data. So we try and use the, the most current data that's available.
So the 11th edition is how old?
A little over a year, September a year or so ago, so. And what we will do going forward, as the methodology, as it becomes adopted, we will refine that every year. If we get new data, we put it into the workbook.
Did you see any major difference between 11 and 9?
No.
I didn't see hardly anything.
No, I know, it, it generally is not. Sometimes you'll see, like, single families gone from, I've seen it go from 9.2, and I was looking at the book here, it was 9.7 back in 2000, or 19, 1994, I'm sorry. It was 9, I'm sorry. Thanks, Tony. I saw that scoring over there. Wait a minute, get the right date. Anyway, it was, it back then, so it's, it's, right now, it's about 9.7, so it's back to where it was before based on, on what they've done. So it doesn't change very much, but it's like a real fine tuning. And every once in a while, they will have new categories, like, like we're going to show in this presentation, where they didn't have age-restricted communities, they didn't have a designation for that, so they do now. So, so we keep, try and keep that up as much as possible, because it's very good. They use that, that Bible is used by most traffic engineers when developers are going in for entitlements to, when they submit for, for getting land use changes, and that is, that is their Bible for, for traffic studies. Anyway, that was used for determining the, say, aided in the roadway benefit determination. Next slide, please. Okay, this was what the traffic, or not traffic, this is what our engineer has come up with. This is the map that shows you all the roads that are owned by the district, and the roads owned by the district are in brown, kind of hard to see there, but can you see them on your, on your screens? Those are all the roads that are owned by the district. The blue roads are owned by Lee County, so that gives you an idea of, of ownerships within the district. And then the ones that aren't indicated are privately owned, within the HOAs and those good things. Next slide, please. Roadway budget. The budget is divided into three sections. We have the gateway sections, which is GF001, the Pelican Preserve section, which is GF002, and the Stony Brook section, GF004. And I'm going to go a little bit into the Pelican Preserve one, because originally, or should say originally, what we've been doing is it's a part of that budget that you all receive, but, and it fell under, inside the gate, outside the gate, that sort of thing, and it was done under administration, but I separated it out so that you get an idea of what you're paying for strictly for your roadways based on the silos. So, and you'll see that when I get to that particular slide. First slide, though, next one after this, is GF001. This is the gateway road, roadway budget, and, and again, it has payroll, salaries in it, that may be changing when we talk, when we start talking about administration and how those costs are, those may be reallocated. We've been discussing that. But you can see it's tree trimming services, landscape mulch, contractual service, which is landscaping, plant replacement, a lot of that is, this is the landscape side of the budget. And then if you, next page is actually the road.
Before you go on.
Yes, sir.
We had a conversation that currently, we operate under three silos, Admin, Waterway Roads.
Correct.
Yeah, and I'd asked if there was anything improper about doing it in four silos, Admin, Administration, Roadway, and Landscape. And I think I heard we're not doing it that way, but we could do it that way.
That is, that is correct, and we can talk about that as we're getting into those processes. And actually, there's gonna, there's gonna be a fifth one with Parks and Rec.
Okay, and I'm okay with that one, too. I'm okay with five, but I want to keep in mind that we're not locked into this. This is a methodology, we may have some others to consider. Please go on.
Okay.
Well, your problem, as I understand with that, is that if roadway is trip generation related, why would you want to do trip generation related on anything other than roadway, or be effective on anything other than roadway like any admin costs? Why would you want to do that?
You mean in terms of, why would, well, because.
In other words, if you don't separate roadway out and have roadway based upon trip generation information, which is generally accepted.
Correct.
And you blended it with admin, now what's going to prevail?
Well, we're not, we're not blending with admin, what we're doing is taking, what we're trying to do is take all the payroll for all of them.
I understand that, but what I think Bob was saying was that, that, that's not in stone.
Have as pure as we can get them.
That it could be, remain as is, whereas in with admin.
Sure.
My question is, if you do that, how do you justify the split if it's not trip generation?
Well, I'll, so what, what you're saying is if we, let's say we separate and we put the landscaping into the, another silo, is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm saying eliminate, like, where we have a trip, or we have a roadway, a stormwater management, and an admin, and a parks and rec, what I thought Bob was saying is keep an open, that instead of having a roadway over there, they keep roadway blended with admin.
No, and I think.
No, no, I want to have independent silos.
Yeah.
We have admin, that's admin. We have roadway, that's roadway. We have landscaping, and then we have.
Okay. Parks and Rec. Yeah, so what he, what he was doing was separating the landscaping from the roadway.
Okay, gotcha.
And.
The only way, the only reason it's there now is because we only have three.
Which is what you've got right now for Gateway, because the one that, the very first one of the 1,431, that is the landscaping component.
Correct, and that's a part of the roadway, what I call the roadway budget are in the roadway silo.
Right.
Because it's in the roadways, that's where it's located. Now, it, it does adjust, Bob, as, as I have taken a look at it, and we will talk about it in the near future, if you take it out, then how do you measure the landscaping? You measure the landscaping, and everybody gets an, and gets a one, then all of a sudden, you're dividing the landscaping by the number of units, not the trip generation. So people with lower trip generation, it's gonna be higher for them. So, anyway, that's.
It's a big difference.
There is a big difference.
And it's a big difference, because it's a big number in both Pelican and Gateway.
Correct. So, anyway, I just want you to be aware, if we do separate it out.
Just want to understand what the options are.
And that's, and, right, and I agree. That's, that's a possibility. The first thing.
What, what would be the link, or the benefit, or whatever, between roads and landscape?
Well, the, the link is that all the landscaping is in the roadways, and if you're driving by it twice as much as a lower trip generation unit, you're getting twice the benefit.
That's the issue.
That's.
If we had huge areas that were landscape-related, that were not road-related, it would be an issue.
Correct.
But it's not. All of our landscaping is for all practical purposes, 95% roadway-related.
And if you had landscaping inside Parks and Rec, that would be put inside Parks and Rec, and we would measure it based on your park and rec benefit, you see? So, so the.
So it's really separating everything, really?
Yeah, you are separating things, but, but to some degree, like I say, the landscaping is all in the roadways that you're maintaining. However, the, looking at it and measuring it that way is, is probably, is in terms of measuring the benefit is the best way to go. I mean, it's, it's the easier way to measure it. So like I said, if you had something, you had landscaping, you had something, if you wanted to put everything that was landscaping outside of that, you could put it into a, in its own silo and measure it on an equal basis for everybody. But the roadway is where the landscaping is, that's why that was the best measurement. So we included all of that together. And, and to be honest with you, I do a lot of methodologies, not just this one, and for my own districts, I do a lot of methodologies, and every one of them, the landscaping's with the roadway.
Is what?
Is with the roadway.
That, that's pretty common.
Ed, part of this could come down to whether the existing areas for landscaping that Pelican has been maintaining, also called shared areas, if they stay within Pelican, inside the gate, outside the gate, I have no issue. If they move, then I might have an issue. So if the Pelican bubble stays the way it is, and inside the gate and outside the gate are still the Pelican landscaping responsibilities that we've historically had, then I'm okay.
Well, some, some of those, we, we, if there was, there was a split that was done between inside the gate and outside the gate, and, and when that was done, I mean, there was a lot of elements when we put the first one together, but what we did then said inside the gate was strictly benefiting inside the gate people, and the people outside the gate were not paying for that, everybody paid for everything outside of the gate, is how that methodology worked.
And I don't say we change that, I just want to pursue it.
I, I understand.
As we go through, as we discuss.
As we go through it, right.
It's almost like you need an 007 account.
And an 008, or 009.
Or an 008, or an 009.
No, but, but.
I, I don't think you need, I just don't want to see a, a huge portion carved out that has historically been within the Pelican, where with on budget and maintenance, and have that take it away.
Yeah, I was trying to, trying to make the comparison of the people outside the gate at Pelican.
Right.
Would not have a participation on the inside of the gate.
Correct, correct.
And.
That's why we keep them separate.
And, and, and Mr. Gafford, if you recall, when we, we went through the methodology before, the first, there's two parts of the methodology. One is looking at the budget and putting him in the proper silo for benefit measurement, and the second part is the benefit measurement. Now, if, if, we don't really need an 007 or 008, because it's all in 001, but if you noticed on your slide, you'll see there for version 5, which was this fiscal year budget, you see all the budgeted numbers that you had adopted. And then in the budget category, what I do is in that budget page, I put down, well, that's a road, that's a road cost, and, and that's a landscape cost, or a part of the roads, and that's a water management cost. So, and then I have all the silos across, and they, they fall right into those categories, so I get a total for all.
And right now, we haven't seen that, we're not, I haven't seen that type of a split.
We haven't, well, that's for the Gateway one. For Pelican Preserve, as you see, when I get into this a little bit, I did do that, so gave you an idea of what, what inside the gate you're paying on a per-unit basis for your roadway and landscape costs. That, that was done separately, just so you had an idea, because it was all lumped into one thing, and I think if you wanted to see a true benefit, what I did in that case, which I will get to, I said, okay, everybody has the same trip generation in Pelican Preserve, because they're inside of the gate, and it's a, and it's a age-restricted community. So I had it, all the units, no matter what type of unit they were in, there was a 4.4, I think it was. And then I did the golf course, which was based on 18 holes, there were 30 trips, yeah, and that was different. And ironically, even though we, if you threw everything that were in the roads in Administration, the only difference was the golf course was paying a little bit less, because the trip generation was a little bit less than their admin cost, but it was close.
And I recall it, yeah.
Yeah, and it was close.
And then we looked at the difference between the Pelican golf course and the Gateway greens, and that's something else.
Ultimately, which we will, yeah.
So, so the way you took and split the Pelican Preserve is basically the same components of costs that were associated with roads on 001 you did on 002?
Inside the gate, yes. Yes, and I, and I went through the budget line item, because you had it broken out by line item in there, but with the, with the cost score. So anyway, that's, that's the Gateway road budget and kind of the Pelican Preserve road budget. If you go on the, this one's Public Works? Yeah, Public Works. Again, it's, you know, you can see down here below, maintenance and repairs for streetlights, you have electricity for streetlights, street sweeping, that's all roadway-related. So those two combined, the other part I did is we have a reserve, part of the capital program, you have a reserve. And what I did as, as opposed, because it really wasn't identified in the budget, what I did was I split the reserve among the silos based on the silos percent of the total. So you, you'll have three numbers in there, you have, you have roadways, you have water management, and you have administration. So if you add those three up, you know, each one was, was $3,000, $3,300, it comes out to $10,000, so, so each one was 33% of that total budget. So I took the reserve part, multiplied it by 33%, that went into the roadways, 33% went into water manag, whatever that percentage was, it wasn't equal, but I took the capital, so that's a part of that budget as well. So, that was the easiest way to, unless they went into detail and I had a complete, here's what we're gonna do with that. So, anyway, that's what we did on the roadway budget, so you go to the next one.
Okay, before we leave that, what made up the $2,144? Is that the first page in this? Total by category?
Oh, the $2,144?
That's the 1,431 plus 595 plus 117.
Right.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, okay, all right. I missed the 595. Screen's too small, now I got it, okay.
Yes, it's all three of those.
Got it.
Okay. Okay, next is the Pelican Preserve roadway budget, so this is where we get into, what it is, I went in, you had the same line items as you did at Gateway. So I did the same, you know, took a look at, there's the roads and there's the landscaping, and in total, it's $1.9 million between the, the, the safe, oh, by the way, in the safety and security category over at Pelican Preserve, I took out the securities, you know, your contract for security services, and I took out the, the guardhouse and all of that. This is strictly the roads inside, just like they do here, just wanted all of you to understand that.
Roads, where in with the other admin?
I'm sorry?
Where did you put the, the residue in admin? If you took the.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah, because, because everybody in, in.
But what you're saying is roadway and landscape.
Roadway and landscaping together.
Right, right.
Was measured by the roads.
Yes, yes.
But, but not the, not the.
Not the security aspect.
No, because the security as, aspect went over, fell over.
I'm okay.
I know, I've just explained, I'm explaining to them, because you and I spent a little time going through this one, but it fell over into the admin category, because everybody benefits equally from the security.
I assume when we get to 004, you did the same thing there? Stony Brook.
Stony Brook.
I have not gotten into the Stony Brook, I haven't done that one yet.
Because as I say, if, if, just to be consistent, if we're pulling that out, we need to pull it out over there.
Yeah, yeah, and I could, it'll, it'll be the same thing, it'll be equal among everybody in there, I mean, because that's.
On, on the, the security.
On everyone.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you're, I'm talking about 001.
004.
You're talking about 004.
But we're talking about 004.
Yeah. Yeah, but in 004, it's gonna be, I will pull out here, but it's gonna be, that's gonna be spread equally among everybody.
So it's not gonna be road-related, that's the issue. It'll be in admin.
It could be, or it could be road-related, just if you want to be consistent, it could be road-related, and everybody in there gets the same trip generation, so that's.
But I mean, here on 002, you pulled it out and separated it to take it to admin, to be consistent, if we would do 004, we would do the same thing.
We'll mirror that.
Oh, correct, it'll be, it'll be mirrored.
Mirror.
But it, it will be on trip generations, you see, when I get into how I did Pelican Reserve, the reason we had to do that at Pelican Reserve is because we had a golf course there, and that also was generating trips, and not at the same amount of trips as a residential unit in there, you see? So, so that, you'll, you'll see what I mean, so in Stony Brook, there's no golf course, so theoretically, it, it's like admin, it's all gonna be spread equally among everybody. But I'll do it that way when I do the final book, because I'll say they generate, you know, there's, there are, what, 7.5 or 7.7, whatever it is, times the number of units, and 100% in each unit gets that percentage of that. That would be as if you gave them all a one, be the same thing, so. So to be consistent, I will do that for the roads, so you understand how they, they get to theirs.
So, two years ago, Pelican repaired its first road.
Mm-hmm.
A Vila, and I think it was about $200,000. Then last year, they did two or three, I forget, two other roads. They have a matrix as to what shape they're in and all that sort of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Where does that road repair fit in here?
Yeah, under the Capitol side.
Roadway restoration?
Yes.
Should be the next.
It's, it's the Capitol roadway restoration.
Okay, so this would be, I think they're planning on doing three roads this year.
Yeah.
So that's it?
It's it, that's in there.
And it's still in the same place.
And it's, and it's done the same way, I mean, that's a part of that, each, each home in there is based on 4.4, and then the golf course has 900 and some odd trips, and they get their percentage of that road restoration, as do you, because of the number of trips impact how the roads are taken here. Okay? Okay, next slide, please.
Go, go back and throw.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Throw a monkey wrench in this. Oh, Stony Brook. How do we handle the Stony Brook outside the gate?
In terms of the roads?
In terms of, uh, payment calculations, that's just my methodology.
Well-
Because they have nothing to do whatsoever with the roads, mu- much like C-5 has at Pelican. They're outside the community, why would they be paying anything for roads inside Pelican?
They pay into the O-1.
Or Stony Brook?
They pay into the O-1, which pays for the maintenance of-
So they're not calculated whatsoever in Stony Brook? Even though they're called Stony Brook?
Only inside the gate. Only inside the gate.
Got you, okay.
And they don't have any commercial areas up there also.
It, it is-
And they don't have commercial areas.
No.
At Stony Brook. Whereas, that's part of ours. And although we have C-4 today, or C-5, whatever, we're going to have two more sometime in the future. That'll be considered the same as the current C-5.
I'm sorry, caught.
It's okay. I said, they don't have the commercial areas, the Stony Brook. And then, we're still undeveloped, we at Pelican outside the gate.
I just didn't realize that Stony Brook outside the gate was in O-1, not in O-4. So they're taking just the 777 inside the gate in the O-4.
Okay, right, good. And, and I take 777 times 7.2 or 9.1, whatever it is, I mean, just to be consistent, we'll do it that way.
Okay.
Normally, we fall under admin, which is one to one across the units, so, that makes sense? Okay? Next is the roadway measurement calculations. All the land parcels within the district have a designated use based on the DOR code that's assigned by the property appraiser, so I have to go by that designation. Um, and if, if somebody wants to challenge that designation, they need to go to the property appraiser to change that. That's not our, if I say, well, I don't think that's really a single family.
You use that to go to the book?
Correct.
To pick out which deal they fall under.
Correct. I mean, that's, that's the way it's measured, as opposed to me determining that, that's not my job, that's why it's in-
That's standard.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. Um, and they use the DOR code, Department of Revenue code, of course, uh, they include single-family condominium, particular commercial uses, golf courses, et cetera, all the uses are in there, um, for the most part. The Institute of Traffic Engineers publishes the Trip Generation Manual, which we talked about, it's updated about every two years, relies on numerous DOR code studies to determine the daily trip generation numbers for each code type. The most recent is the 11th edition, I'm kind of repeating again, but the next page is an excerpt from the workbook, and this gives you an idea. Now, these aren't all the uses that we use here in Gateway, but it's the majority of them. But this is where I go to. So, if they give me a, actually, the 110 and the 130 and the 140, you see the number after that? That's actually the ITE, the Institute of Traffic Engineers number. That, that's what that relates to. So, so for instance, if I see a DOR code of one, that's a single family. If I see a DOR code of four, that's a multifamily. Um, and sometimes they, here where it says, single fam home is a 210, so it's 9.43 trips, um, which is down about four or five rows, you can see. Uh, senior adult housing detached, 4.31, that's the age restricted community, which is down, I don't know, about a third of the way down, as you can see. The golf course, on a per-hole basis, 30 trips per day on a per-hole basis, so 30 times 18. That's how that is used, so, anyway, that's how-
What's Kate, Russ, explain units KSF, DU, what, what does KSF stand for?
Uh, per square feet. Per thousand.
Thousand.
Yeah, that's what the K stands for.
Okay, and DU?
Yeah, so, so if you, if you have a 10, DU is density unit, is what it means, and, and I will get into how that's measured when I show the example of my mythical community that we have coming up. But the point being is if you have a 10,000 square foot building and, and it has a trip generation of five per thousand square feet, it's going to be 10 times 5. That's how, how the math is done. Because you divide that 10,000 by 1,000, you get 10. And you multiply that by the number of trips per thousand, and that's where we get our number.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, next, uh, roadway measurement, we assign the corresponding daily trip figure, we add up all the trips in the community, each parcel's trip is divided by the total number of trips that are generated within the community itself, which generates a percentage of the total for each parcel. And then the total roadway budget, which is in the silo, is multiplied by each parcel's percentage of total trips to generate the benefit assessment, the roadway benefit assessment for each parcel. So ultimately, when we're all said and done, I'm going to have a, a, um, assessment for water management, assessment for roadway, an assessment for parks and rec, and an assessment for admin, and landscaping if we decide to do that, so. And then those are all added up, and that's where your assessment is for the year.
Okay, but when we talked about waterways, you kept Gateways separate from Pelican. You said you were going to have two silos.
Yes.
When we talked about waterways and ponds.
Yes.
You said we would keep two silos.
Yes.
Are you keeping two silos for roads then also?
We haven't got there yet.
Well, isn't that a yes or no question?
It will be. It, well, and, and really, I should say, it, it will all be dependent upon the board, um, and how, how that is handled. And I will get into that, that's part of my questions at the end.
Because that's the direction that you want from us?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. I, I mean, what I'm doing is laying how we measure it, then we can determine what we're measuring. If that makes sense.
Well, if you did it for waterways, why wouldn't you do it for roadways?
Because you have a common area, that's why. You, you could, the common area on waterway is the flowway.
Yes.
On the common area for roads are all the common area roads. That's, you could do it. You could do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's, and, and I, I love that you guys are asking questions, but a lot of times the questions are answered when you get, when you get through it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And you'll see, but, no, 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 don't apologize, I'm glad you're doing that.
Well, I see here, the total roadway budget silo is multiplied.
Writing up book.
That would indicate one.
You appreciate this.
Oh, good. I mean, that's good, you're paying attention, that's important. Okay, um, then the total roadway budget again is, it's all added up and, and then we multiply by that parcel's percentage, and each parcel gets one. Now, this is the math, and, and I call it a mythical example, because this isn't anywhere. This isn't Gateway, this isn't Pelican Preserve, but I just want to give you an idea on how it's all added up, because we're doing this over 75, 7800 units and parcels, so, I mean, you would be really small. But I just wanted to give you an idea, a, a small amount how it works. So let's say we have a, a community that has 2,500 single-family units, 500 multifamily units, one golf course that has 18 holes in it, a general office space that is 20,000 square feet, a shopping center that's 50,000 square feet, and a convenience service station, much like you have your 7-Eleven over here. And I kind of use that as an example, because they have six pumps, right? And, and I say six pumps, actually they have 12, but I count the, the pumps themselves, I don't count each side of them, because that's how they do it at ITE. It's based on the, the pump, whether you're using one side or the other. So, we do that, and the measurement again is a per density, or, yeah, per density unit, or on a per-hole basis for the golf course, per thousand square feet on the commercial. And then the convenience service station is based on a per pump station, they give you a trip number for that. So the ITE multiplier is, single families 9.43, multifamily is 4.81, I really should have probably put one in here for, um, age restricted, just as a, give you an example, but, um, golf course is 30.38, and you can see 10.84 trips per thousand square feet for general office, and 37.01 square feet for a shopping center, and 265 trips per pump station. I mean, they're, you know, they generate a ton of trips, because everybody's getting gas all the time. So, then I multiply those out, the number of units times the ITE multiplier. So for single family, 2,500 times 9.43 is 23,575 trips. And it's done that way all the way down, the total amount of trips generated in this little mythical community is 30,000, 30,184. Then, then under the percent of the trips, so the 23,000, 23 and a half thousand is 78% of the trips generate, generated. And it always goes down the line, as you can see, it equals 100%. Then the budget is, I used a million and a half just for a budget for that year. They must have some really nice roads. Anyway, so then, then you, you multiply at 78 times the 1.5 million, so the single families allocation of the budget is, uh, almost 1.2 million on down the line, and then I divided it back up by the units. Um, so each single family would be 468 for that road, a multifamily would be 239. Um, .54 and, and the dollar 84 is on a square foot basis, I went back to the, the square foot part. And then the convenience is 13,000, I mean, they, that's just a one spot, that's what they pay. So that's how it's measured, and we do the same thing here for Gateway. We didn't do that at Pelican Reserve, in the new, depending on how we do all of that, I'm going to show you how we would do it at Pelican Preserve, because those roads internally, the golf course is in there. So I need to do it on a trip generation basis, and, and I think I, I did show you when we went through the calculation, it's not much difference than our, our, um, EAU that we were using originally.
So if you would have had a community in this theoretical community here?
Uh-huh.
That was a Pelican Preserve senior citizen, 55 and over, you would have had a listing there and a trip generation of 4.31.
Correct. Yep, based on the number of units that are in there.
Okay.
So, it didn't matter what type of unit it was, because that's what I-
Instead of the 9.4, right?
Right.
Well, instead of the 9.43, and instead of the 4.81.
Yeah, because there's a multifamily in there. So it wouldn't matter, it's just 4.4, it doesn't matter if you're a single family or multifamily.
For both single and multifamily.
Correct.
Well, if it's 4.81 for-
Multi.
A generic community, multifamily. If you're age 55 and over, is it correspondingly reduced the way a single family is?
It looked like it was less.
No, it's 4.4, doesn't matter what kind of unit you have.
Doesn't make any difference. Oh, 4.4, that's the generic number, 4.4.
Any multifamily regardless.
Any multifamily, any single family within the age restricted community. It's 4.4. And it's because it's age restricted, I mean, that's, that's how they measure it. I, I guess they didn't include golf carts in there, so.
That, that just, that just complicates the hell out of it.
Yeah, but they don't, they don't do a heavy impact on the road. Anyway, so that, I just wanted to give you an idea, that's how we-
And when you have rumble strips.
Yeah.
They're gone.
Well, part of them are gone.
But anyway, I just wanted all of you to understand, that's how the math works. And we do it for Gateway, and then I'm going to show you kind of a, on Pelican Preserve, because at Pelican Preserve, we didn't, originally, remember what we did, is we just divided among everybody, because it fell in that, that inside the gate budget. But I pulled it out, and I took a look at those numbers, and, so if you go to the Pelican Preserve budget, this was the same budget we looked at a minute ago, where I dedicated to what, what roads were in terms of safety and security, taking out, taking out the security part, the safety and security part.
So this is PP right here?
Yes, yeah, you can see at the top. I, I changed all the titles now. I put them up there so that it made it clear.
Okay.
Thank you very much for helping me with that.
You're very welcome.
Just, just so we can make it clear what we're looking at. Um, and then you can see the budget categories, roads and the landscaping. So, so, and, and when you see the version 5 budget, where it says 121,000, 1,23,000 there, that's actually all of those, um, items, that includes your security and everything, but true roadway is 482,000 in there. So, so the number to really look at is the actual road costs, I see I put actual road costs in there. That's, um, that's the actual road costs that we're measuring the benefit from, the trip generation from. So we had 482 in the, under the roads, and then under landscaping was 766,000. So the total was 1.2 instead of 1.9. The difference is, again, your security system, gatehouse, all that good stuff, which we took out. So, next slide, please. Here's how we did this. Now, in the golf course, originally, the way we did it, we had, we did it based on units. And if you recall, in our discussion, we had about the old sales center and the town center, how we used to, I used to allocate that, I don't anymore. Um, we used to allocate that, and then, then what I did, as opposed to putting that on the tax collector and the tax role, assessment role, I actually took those and would spread it between single family and multifamily. Now, I don't even, I don't even put the benefit in there, because it's truly a, a common element, a CE, that's the designation of it. And the same will happen this coming year with the maintenance facility, the golf course ma-, or not the maintenance facility. The RV park, yeah, the RV parking area. That will now, it, it won't get assessed, because it was owned by WCI or Lennar, whoever it was, for a long time, but now that it's truly in your CE, it won't be assessed. Other, so that means you just get a little bit more in your, your budget.
Spread out the money to the owners.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Now, so when we did it before, they had 256 golf course units, remember, we did that on one unit per acre basis? And then the old sales center was 1.86 and 21.61, and that was, that was based, I mean, we don't really need to talk about it, but it was based on square footage. And then multifamily, each multifamily unit got a one, a single family got a one. You see how I did the percentages? In the road landscape, the 1248 would have been allocated accordingly, 115, oh, 86, um, for the golf course, and then each, you know, there, there are a total of, um, of, the total of the 1.2, it could be, that was total by category, and then you go down below, you can see where I had the units, the percent, and then it was $449 per unit for your roadway.
Can you slide that up a little, Chelsea?
Uh, I can't, because it's a far point.
Okay.
Oh, sorry about that.
Is the situation?
So the reason you didn't factor in, like, if you were doing this on one side, you would have had single families with a multiplier, a trip generation, multifamilies with a, but since Pelicans, everybody is equal, you just count them as one on this analysis?
Correct, and this was inside the gate.
Okay.
This is just didn't include the outside of the gate course. This is, this is the actual roadways inside Pelican.
Roadways inside.
Correct.
Got you.
That's a part of their budget.
And the other big change, of course, is with the golf, with the sales center and town, and the town center coming out, all the residents are paying for those things anyway. It's whether we pay it in here and consider, or whether we pay it in dues.
Which pocket it comes out of.
So this way, this way is cleaner.
It, it's cleaner this way, and also, it saves you money, because if you put on the assessment rule, you got a minimum markup of 3% for the collection cost.
4%.
Or, yeah, well, 4% is the discount.
Either way, it's, it's that good for the residents.
Right, and that's, we did that originally from the beginning, even though we had to allocate at that point, because it wasn't owned by the, the common owner of the HOA, it was owned by the developer. So we did assess it, and then we passed it back through. But now we don't have to anymore.
So the product inside the gate, those are the only three items?
The golf course, multifamily, single family, that's correct. And the multifamily and single family get the same, as you'll see, this is the way it was currently done, but we're going to change that, maybe. Well, no, it, we should, we should, so we're consistent in measurement.
Well, to, to Flavius' question, the outside the gate, which we called shared?
Mm-hmm.
Was in the old methodology.
Yes, but they, but they were part of the outside of the gate number.
Understanding.
Right.
We, still part of our bucket of money.
Correct.
It only went out to, didn't go anywhere else.
Correct.
Okay. As we move forward, we're hoping to, to maintain that.
I understand that, and that's going to be a board decision on how we do that.
Okay.
But the point, the point being here was, this was actual roadway costs inside the gate.
Okay.
That's, what I wanted to do was give you an apples to apples, like we do it over here at, uh, like we all do it over here at Gateway. It's, it's done the same way.
So on this table here, you've got two more lines that's not showing on the drawing, correct? One for the golf course, one for the sales center, which brings into the account those assessment shares?
Well, the, 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 yeah, and, and there's no assessment shares for the common element for the golf course.
Well, right now, you've got three of the five up above showing, but you don't have the two, you don't have the-
Sales center or the town center.
Correct.
Correct.
But, but those are numbers.
Yeah, well, you see down below, if you look below, it says sales, town center allocation.
So, we don't see that on this slide.
Oh, it's-
No. See, you've got five up here, you only have three down here.
Correct.
You don't have old sal-, and town.
He's putting the sales and town center out there.
The allocation.
You're doing it all, okay.
Yeah, you have to, you have to follow it all the way across.
Okay.
So, so theoretically, the golf course is-
That's the same thing. That's the same thing.
The golf course is paying 449, 52 per unit and then 453 and 453, you see. So I alloc, I allocated it as, just as if we'd been. So if you go to the next slide, this is how we would do it inside the gate, same numbers. But now we're doing the Pelican Preserve trips, which I combined the single family, multifamily, there's 10,766 trips. So that's 4.4 times, times the single family and multifamily units. Okay? And then the, the golf course trips is 958. That's the 30 trips times 18 holes. Then you have the percent of the trips, which equals up to 100.
Times 18 or 27?
Oh, I'm sorry, times 27. That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for correcting me. I appreciate that.
Who's the question?
No, no, no. You are correct. I keep, I have to keep remembering that. So anyway, it's times, times the 27 and then gives you the percent of the trips, the budget allocation. As you can see, when you add single family, multifamily together, it's 2498 and the golf course is one. So it's, so you can see where the golf course came down to 101 from 115,000. It's a little bit better for them on a trip generation, but it's very close. So that, that's a good sign. And the other part of that is the single family went from 453 to 459, went up. So if we were to do trip generation inside the gate with your roadways, that's what it is. So it was just to give you an example of, of how the budget, so you can kind of give apples and apples comparison. Okay? Okay. Now, originally, we had talked about, and I've, I've only done this one way, but there's, because there's a bunch of questions that come after this. But what I did was I took the gateway budget and, and for the roads. And then what I did was I took all the trips at Gateway and I took all the trips and added Pelican Reserve in it, but also the Pelican Reserve golf course trips, the C5 trips and the commercial trips. So all of the gateway, the gateway trips at the top of this slide includes commercial, it includes the golf course, that's everything because it, otherwise I would have had a list of a mile long. So that's all of the gateway trips.
You're lumping them together.
I just lumped them all together.
Into the categories.
Yeah. And then, then I added the four from Pelican Reserve, so we get an idea of, of how that relates to the 62,000 trips that are generated over here. And then you can see the percentages. And then if you take the gateway budget, because we had talked about, are you sharing equally in those roads over here, which is a discussion that, that will need to be had? Here's how it all works out. In terms of the total, and I don't have the road assessment per unit on the gateway, I could have added it in there, I just didn't put it in. But what I wanted to show was that if it was to go the way it was originally presented, where we're going to share that budget among everybody, then it'd be 113, $114 per unit at Pelican Reserve increase.
Russ, just to clarify that your gateway trips also includes Stony Brook trips?
Yes. Yes. Stony Brook is included in that, in that total, has nothing to do with, they're inside the gate. This is actually, they're a part of the trips over here. They're paying, they've been paying for the roads over here since, since I've been.
Well, so, so the shared component, by my math, is about $26, some change. In other words, 2,233 divided by 8405.
Divided by 84. Yeah. Yeah, that would be.
About $26, $26 a unit.
Okay. No, per, per trips, you're talking about per trips?
If you go to your page right here, you're 2,233, 524.
Correct.
So the, everybody's share.
Yeah, it is per trips.
It's on a per.
Per trips, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, it's on a per trip basis. So it's not, it's on a share, on a per trip basis. So if, if you, if it's $23 or whatever you say it is, multiply that by 9.4 for a single family and then.
For whatever category you want to multiply.
You haven't, you haven't done that extension here. So what we really need to do then is to take the, get the true numbers because Pelican Reserve's 10,776 is at essentially 4.31, correct?
4.0, yeah, whatever, 4.31.
And the gateways are either at 9.0 or 7.0 something.
Or, and the golf course and the commercial.
The math I did is not correct.
Correct.
We need another column that shows what the total trip generation is in both communities, then divided by the 2 million or divided into the 2,233 to find out what the equivalent share of common roads are.
No.
That's, I just did it. I mean, that's what the math is.
It's just not breaking down categories. So the total, the 84, 505, that's the total.
That's the total number of trips for everybody.
And then under Pelican Reserve trips, that.
Okay, you just take 12. You, you just take 12.74%.
Okay. Yeah. And then that, that, then they take the budget and I allocated that to the, that's where you get the 284, they divide it by the number of units.
Am I reading this, Russ, that this is a proposal, but you haven't thought of?
This is, this is based on what, what the direction had been because of.
Correct. This is a proposal for 25 and moving forward, for 26.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, my question to you is, if you take the four categories that are Pelican and lump them the same way you did Gateway, what's the change?
In terms of?
If, if, the difference between the 62,000 and the 84,000 is some number.
Yeah, and that's the four categories.
Now, if that's the number, and you apply the Pelican 55 and over to it.
You can't.
Why?
Because the commercial, all the commercial uses have different trip generations.
But in the past, we have it.
No, well, in the past, this, remember, this is the budget that's outside, that's over here.
I, I, see, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I'm trying to determine what is the impact of the proposed change to the Pelican residents?
It's right there on the right-hand side.
Okay. But if it was all lumped together, but you're saying now because of new methodology, you don't feel comfortable with that?
It is lumped together.
Yeah, the 284, the 25, the 42 and the 219 add.
They're, they're small percentages, 2%, 1%, but the commercials.
9.83, correct. Percent. For the trips, they're about 10% of the, the total trips in Gateway and Pelican Reserve combined. Within the district, within the district boundaries, that's the trips that are generated, 84,000 a day.
That's Stony Brook inside the gate as well.
That's Stony Brook, yeah, because there, I gave them their trip generation as well.
Everybody.
Everybody.
Total trips in Gateway.
Everybody. So Stony Brook is included in the gateway trips, as is the golf course, as is all your commercial. That's the total. I didn't break it out because like I said, it would have been a real long spreadsheet.
Yeah, so.
I, so, because I already had that measured, I mean, because we've been using it for a few years now, actually, I had it updated a year ago when we got the 11th edition. That's the total number of trips inside Gateway.
So if we wanted to get a total, if you take the 1.661 from the 2,233, that's the apples and oranges of the impact, correct?
Yeah, that is the difference.
Good.
So you take those four and add them together and I don't, if I had my computer in front of me, I could have done it pretty quick.
What, four? 21, 6, 29.
So 21, 21, 6, 29.
You're talking for the trips?
No, no, he was talking about the dollar amount.
571.
About 571.
Versus the 1661.
Yeah, versus.
Okay.
So how is this different for Gateway? Did theirs go up also because you didn't include their units or their road assessment per unit either?
I didn't show what the difference would be. I'd have to go through and there's going to be difference for commercial, there's going to be a difference for the golf courses, going to be a difference for single family, a difference for multifamily. I didn't calculate what the, what the difference is, what theirs would go down by, by what this one is going up by.
Because you're saying that their methodology basically stays the same?
Correct.
From?
What they've done, yeah. The way, the way it's measured.
From the current to what you're proposing?
Yeah. So basically, what, what would happen, Carol, is that 2, 2, 2, 3, 3, 5, 4 would be allocated among the 63,000 trips. Now you're allocating among 84,000 trips.
I just did a calculation. What, what it changes is, the one.
None of this makes sense.
Okay.
What, what it changes is the, the one third, two thirds ratio, if you did it on a unit basis, because of the 4, 3, 1 count, took that 3, 3% and dropped it down to about 25%. That's the differential.
Okay.
About, about what we expected.
We did, we did calculate outside of the gate too.
Wait till I can.
I get it.
I think there's something you're.
Okay.
Okay. No, finish up.
Okay. Next slide, please. These are the questions that it's board discussion items because depending, depending on how we.
Direction we give you, then you adjust it accordingly.
Sorry?
You adjust it accordingly.
Correct. Correct. I mean, that's, I gave you the methodology and how I will calculate it and really what, what we're going to determine now is what parts of the budget go into the silos.
Okay.
For all intents and purposes. I mean, that's the bottom line of it. Because the way we generate the trip generation is not going to change.
It's not going to change. So you explained that part and now we have to decide what goes and why.
Yeah, and one, one remaining question I have, because I don't know the answer. Go back one slide. If that is the recommended allocation based on the trip generations, how does that compare to what the actual is that we do in this year? In other words, when I calculate this, come, I come to $570,000 for Pelican roads. What is it currently?
For Pelican roads?
For, for those five categories.
No, it's the gateway. These are the, these are only the, the gateway roads, Bob.
No, 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 no.
Go back. He's asking between Pelican Reserve trips.
Golf course trips, C5 trips, commercial.
Between those, like.
Yeah.
All this combined is 566,000.
I got 571.
It's 570 and so you divide 570.
No, 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 no. I don't care about that.
I know, I know what you're saying.
I'm saying that is a standalone number. What does that compare to what we do today?
Right. What, what we needed to do, you saw it was like 400 and some dollars a unit, somewhere in there.
I have no idea.
Keep going back, keep going, there we go. No, next one.
Another one?
Keep going. There you go.
See, well, we don't do it.
See, it's four, was it 489?
459.
459 is what you're doing inside the gate right now, based on your road budget and your number of units that you have and then your trip generation. Remember, we changed it.
No, 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 no.
It's not what you're asking.
I'm not asking for assessment per unit.
I think, if I'm looking at it, I think you're looking at a $500,000 difference. Is that what you're looking at?
Well, that's what I'm trying to determine. It looks like it's $500,000.
Because I think that's what we're asking.
Yeah, 70 difference.
So right here, the budget allocation as of now is 1.146 and then, and then if we go back to how it was.
If we, if we adopt this.
It's going to be five, either 60.
The new allocation, 571.
To, yeah, to here, you mean, to Pelican Reserve?
That's all I'm talking about.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So you're, so we're adding 500 to the 1.2. Is that what you're saying?
That's, that's.
No, 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 no. I'm taking 500 away from the 1, 1, 4, 6.
No, you're adding.
You're adding 570.
So by adopting this methodology, it's going to cost the inside the gate residents an additional almost $600,000.
That's where the, that's where, yes, that's correct.
Yes, that, that's it. And what I said earlier, if it was a third, it's really 25 and it's because of the 0.431 or the 4.31 trip generation versus the nine over here. That's the difference.
Right.
It allows a reduction in the cost.
Go back to the other slide.
Okay. And those four, Bob's right, it's about 570. So their share of additional costs associated with common area roads is 570 to be split among their group, however that calculation showed.
Yeah. So what, what we're doing as opposed to just, you have your budget inside the gate and now we're taking the common area roads that are over here and spreading them among everybody based on trip generation.
Okay, but the common area roads over there, the Pelican Reserve golf course trip, the C5 trip and the commercial trips right now, those collected monies are in the O2 budget. We collect them, we distribute.
Right.
At the present.
But they don't pay for your roads.
Excuse me?
They don't pay for your roads.
What do you mean they don't?
The 570, Bob, is not, that 570 that you added up, and I agree with, is currently not in your budget right now.
No, today it is in my budget is what I'm saying. Today, when those monies are collected, all of the monies inside the gate, outside the gate, in Pelican, go into the O2 account today.
Right. What he's trying to do is, he's taking the common area cost of the district and allocating those and 570 or 25% of that is assigned to Pelican. It's added to your total cost of which then you do the distribution and determine what that is. It's really easy to calculate it, take 570 divided by the total number of trips and that's the add-on.
$229. But, but here's my point, is that little bubble around Pelican and it's inside the gate and outside the gate, as that money has been here to fore, collected by the district, it's all been in the O2 account. And what I think I'm hearing is, it's not all going to be in the O2 account, it's now going to come over here to a mystery account, part of it, the outside the gate part of it, the four components that are listed here. Am I missing something?
No, I think, I think you're still going to have whatever you get into that O2 account. This is over and above that. This is the actual road cost that's shared by everybody. So.
Which you were, you were collecting before and you will be collecting now.
Well, we were, we were collecting before only when the gateway side.
That's what I meant, Pelican.
Yeah.
You just, really, if you go back to that, if you go back to this table right here, 570 to that, and that's exactly what it is. You have the security and safety, you have the landscaping and you have the common share, which is 570.
Right.
So in summary, you will not, like, I, I think I, I get what you're saying. The additional, the 570,000 dollars that you'd be adding on is what Pelican Reserve residents will not be paying on the gateway side for those categories.
Correct.
Well, why would we have been paying for that too?
Because there's a benefit.
To, benefit to who?
That's a question to Russ. So I'll do, I'll explain to you, I'll tell you got it. So what happened is, it's not, it is an increase, it's that you weren't, Pelican Reserve were not paying for that 571,000 because it was on the gateway side. But now, with the new methodology, there's a benefit for it.
Benefit for everybody and all the trips are included on that.
Yeah.
Correct.
No, 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 no. You're, you're missing the point. I don't think that the people of C5 or the commercial properties benefit anybody over here.
It's their part of the district.
Well, there is a way, a way, we've always done it.
But that's, that was.
And that's a board decision, I think.
But that was repealed.
Is that a board decision?
That is a board decision, it's a board decision.
So don't say that it isn't, it is a board decision. And what I'm suggesting to the board is, we're trying to be fair and equitable and all those good motherhood words. How can we in good conscience say that what we've done for 25 years relative to these individual areas now mysteriously benefit Gateway $600,000? It doesn't change a crap a thing over here. The only thing it adds is open your wallet, Pelican, and pay. I don't know any other way to say it.
Let me, let me go through the.
Looking at the other way, we've been paying it over, over here, we're all in the same district. Just going in circles of chapter six again, that's all we're doing.
I thought we were having a discussion, Ed.
Well.
And there are more than one person adding to this discussion.
Let me, let me go through my question, and I know what yours, I understand.
Okay, so, what your figures are showing us here is that everything is put into one silo for. So inside or outside Pelican and Gateway all go into one silo. What if you, now, what are the figures if you kept it two silos?
If, if, the way I have done it, you still have your roads inside Pelican Reserve, which you're paying for. And that was the analysis where I showed you, it was 469. And now what I've done is I've taken the gateway side, which was the discussion initially when all this took place, was that that roadway budget now gets split among everybody, including C5, including the commercial over there. All of those are included and then the golf course, the Pelican Reserve golf course. Now, that's what this analysis does. That's where we go up, and I didn't show what the, what the reduction is over at Gateway, it's $500,000 coming out of the budget, spread among all the units over here. However.
My question is.
Well, let, I, I understand. Go to the board discussion items, please. Now, here's the questions that are out there. So the first one, should landscaping be included in the roadway calculation for both Pelican Reserve and Gateway, which is what we had talked about at one time? Landscaping could become its own silo and have a separate benefit measurement applied. Although to me, as we talked about, it, the landscaping, unless it went to a certain place, like if you were doing the park or you were doing landscaping, that was along the water management system, it would fall into those silos and it's benefiting those silos. These are on the roads. Therefore, that's the best measurement for it. Now, the second question.
Well, before you go up with that, I, I understand what you're saying. And so, you know, that's one option. What's the option of having them separate?
You could do it separate, what I'm saying, we, if we did it separate, then I have to come up with a measurement, a benefit measurement calculation for landscaping.
Okay.
And, and if I did that, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Tinkle, but if I did that, then how am I gonna measure the landscaping? Then I do it equally for everybody. So what happens if you do it that way? If you're a lower trip generation, you're gonna pay more. And if you're a more, a higher generation, you're gonna pay less.
But that, again, you're focusing on inside the gate.
No, I'm just saying, if we did it here at Gateway, or we did it over at Pelican Reserve, it'd be the same thing.
If we take the footprint that Pelican has historically covered, inside gate, outside gate, commercial, that's, that's our footprint.
Correct.
And you do that as a standalone, and then it can't be a change of cost.
Yeah, okay, and you can, you can, you can do it, you're talking about Pelican Reserve, and, but you have your own budget for landscaping, right?
Which also includes outside the gate.
Right, and we did split that.
Well, I'm saying don't split it. That, you're, that's, that's the whole point. We currently allocate budget and maintain that.
If you don't split it, then people inside the gate are gonna be paying more, because then you're taking it away from outside the gate people.
Correct. You don't wanna do that, Bob.
You don't wanna do that.
Not doing that, I mean, I can't understand how, I can't wrap my head around this. If I have a budget today.
Landscaping, correct.
Landscaping and roads, I have a budget.
Correct.
And I don't change, I just totally ignore the terminology inside the gate, outside the gate. Nothing changes. Whatever I spent last year, I'm gonna spend this year.
Correct.
There's no change. How's that, how's that negatively impacting anybody?
Well, if, if you kept it the same, what's happening now is, you, we have inside the gate, outside the gate in your landscape budget. So we're taking the outside of the gate portion of that out. Everybody, everybody in Pelican Reserve, everybody along tree.
Why?
Just a minute.
Okay.
Let me finish. You have tree line landscaping.
Yeah.
Okay? So, inside the gate, outside the gate, all benefit from that. You do, they benefit from it, you benefit from it. It's outside the gate, but everybody benefits from that. And that's where they got that percentage that was.
Did they benefit from it last year?
Yes.
Okay. Why are we changing it? They got their benefit last year. They're gonna get their benefit in future years.
Well, and that's a part of the discussion that we can do with the silos, if we need to say, okay, we're gonna put, that portion of it is outside the gate, maybe that goes to everybody inside of Gateway, everywhere. Because that's a, outside of the, you know, that's a common area, kind of, wait a minute. It's a common area, just like your common area is over here.
Every road in Pelican's common. We don't, we can't keep people out. Every single road in Pelican is a common area.
It's fine. I mean, I get that.
Well, then why are we making this decision? That's what I'm getting at. Everybody can ride on tree line, can ride anywhere in Pelican, what's the difference?
There, there.
There is no difference.
There's district roads, I get that.
District road, public road, really.
They're public, that's what I mean by district.
You're not talking about roads, the only thing you're talking about is landscaping.
Correct.
Because the road's along with the city or the county. So there's no, there's no, no road cost associated with it, it's purely landscaping.
Purely landscaping outside of.
Outside, correct.
Doug has a question.
Doug, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, and what I may need to do is get, get Tom and Russ separately, um, because I have, I have a couple of questions. But Russ, if we, when you're doing your calculations for Pelican, and you're looking at trip generation, you, if I'm thinking of those that live, you know, within, within the, you know, i- inside the, the gate from Gateway, and we map usage. Pretty much everyone within Gateway is gonna hit, um, you know, Gateway Boulevard, Griffin, um, at a certain percentage. Let's say that's, everyone who lives in Gateway is gonna hit Gateway Boulevard or Griffin about eighty percent of the time. If you're in Stony Brook, you have to hit it a hundred percent of the time, right? Because there's no other way out.
Correct.
Um, I think what, what Bob might be getting at is, when, originally when we were having a conversation, it was trying to identify benefit. Is there a benefit? And if we say, yes, there's a benefit, well, what percentage of that benefit, um, are we going to allocate for the assessments? So when you're looking at, maybe I'm just not picking up on this, if you're looking at Pelican's impact to roads, what are you identifying as their benefit? Is it just equal to Gateway? Is it, you know, e- equal to a Gateway resident? Or is there a percentage based on your calculations? Based, based on use or access or?
Doug, basic, basically, there is no percentage of, of use other than the trip generation portion of it. That's really the percentage of use.
So it's just, it's the calculations that you were given, you just apply them to the methodology.
Correct.
Okay.
So what we could do, or as an option, we could say, okay, if all things being equal, this is what the split would be. However, if we calculate benefit, then that amount could potentially be reduced due to the access and, I mean, benefit and accessibility, you know, could, could be argued. But we, we could, we could play around with the percentage.
But then you wouldn't be utilizing the trip generator.
It's a tool, Bobby, because we can't really sit here and say to ourselves, a resident of Gateway Greens is going to use Pastoria Boulevard or Cypress Grove.
But what Russ is saying is, that's how you use it to get.
That is, that is a method, and we're suggesting it may not fit.
I, I could very easily see, because I do it myself, very easily see that the landscape issue associated with, uh, what's called the street.
Right on.
Uh, the road.
Tree line.
Tree line, tree line. Would be added as a common area cost. I can see that very easily.
You mean to the overall Gateway part?
That is to Gateway as Gateway Boulevard and Griffin is.
But you never paid the pay.
But that would be very easy to add that component of cost as a common area cost. I think Doug is coming up with this, what I've been talking, tried to say for the last year on this with Pelican, is, I think Doug is saying, is there another factor that we could apply? That would be for people that live somehow, some way, and I don't want, sure as hell don't wanna use that stupid, uh.
Interconnect.
What do you call it? Connectivity.
Yeah.
Correct. Not that again, but what is a reason, what would be a justification? Because this thing's got ramifications. It's not like Pelican, it's Arborwood, and it's Worthington.
Mm-hmm.
So how, and Stony Brook. How do you come up with a deal?
Well, and, and Russ, here's, here's my point. And I think ultimately, if I'm thinking about what my philosophy is going into this whole thing with chapter six, was if we're one gateway, we need to operate as one gateway. Um, you know, when, when we're looking at, you know, separating, whether it's Stony Brook or Pelican, how do we get under one gateway umbrella? So that, for me, that was the guiding principle. How do we all, how do we unify Gateway under one, you know, for lack of a better term, one, one GL? Um, but there, there could be additional concessions or considerations in that assessment methodology model, and for two reasons. One, I think we've been doing it a certain way for twenty years. Um, if our guiding principle is to get under all one gateway, it may not be, you know, fair and reasonable to say, in, in the next year, Pelican, you have to, you know, uh, absorb this five hundred thousand dollar cost for roads, or whatever. We either stagger it or say that there is, there is a percentage based on benefit, or whatever the calculation is, that we can apply. And so at the end of the day, we're one gateway, but we're also trying to be, you know, fair and equitable and, and defendable in how we're doing our methodology. So, you know, there is some, uh, some consideration or, or, uh, I can't remember what, what word I'm looking for is, but some concessions that we make in order for it to work for everyone.
Some accommodation.
I've, I've come up with the same thing, Doug, for, for months now, trying to figure out, what is the factor we use? Short of connectivity, that's created enough trouble twenty years ago, don't even do that again. What can we use, because it's gonna be tested by the people in Arborwood, people in Worthington? So we gotta have, and Stony Brook. So we gotta have an answer as to what the basis is. I cannot think of one other than just an arbitrary picking of a number.
Well, and to be honest with you, there, there are, you can always create discount factors within the.
That's what we're talking about.
I know.
That's exactly what this is.
Exactly right, and I understand that part, too. And there's a lot of ways we can measure that. You and I talked about that today, about maybe it's there, to get to these roads, they gotta go outside of the boundary, the district boundary. So what is that discount factor? You know, those are, then that, and.
But see, that still keeps the same three players in the game.
Well, and, and here's the thing, too, Russ, what I'm thinking is, I think there's two tiers here, in, in my, you know, layman's small brain. It's one, the first factor is overall benefit to Gateway, and, and that has to be factored in. So to me, there's a minimal, and let's just say, just for arbitrarily throwing a number out there, let's say that's ten percent, or, or, you know, ten, twenty percent, that all of Gateway, there is a benefit to the roads, landscaping, to all these things, that is inherent to all communities within Gateway. Then there is, you know, uh, the second tier, which is either access or, you know, is something else. And I'm not talking about connectivity, I, I'm talking about, you know, actual, the access and usage. So if I were to map a hundred users in Pelican, if I were to map their, um, you know, their, not necessarily trip generation, but literally their active use, is there a percentage of Pelican users that are, you know, accessing, you know, Gateway outside of Pelican? You know, i- is there a way to kind of look through that and say, okay, if we look at the total amount, the factor is twenty percent, because it's ten percent, which is common, that's a, you know, that's the standard, and then additional ten percent, that is additional use. And again, these are completely arbitrary numbers I'm throwing out there. Uh, because again, if I, if I do that same mapping, uh, kind of geo-mapping of someone in Stony Brook or Gateway Greens or any other community on this side, that usage is gonna be a hell of a lot higher, because you have to hit the roads, you have to, um, you know, drive by landscaping. So that's gonna be, you know, at a minimum eighty percent. Like Gateway Greens might even be less than Stony Brook, because you can go out the back way, you may not hit Gateway Boulevard. Um, that's the way I'm kind of thinking about it, and I don't know if that's an accurate way of thinking, but, and I know that you've kind of, well, you've, I think, said something similar, but I don't know if, if we kind of grasp it, grasp it at the time that you had mentioned in the past. That's where I kind of got the idea, like, it doesn't have to be a, you know, split fifty-fifty, because it may not be fifty-fifty, and, and we could argue for Pelican, that is not fifty-fifty, you know? And, and we don't wanna use interconnectivity, but that is really kind of the baseline behind the thought process.
I don't think anyone in Pelican is quote-unquote, not willing to pay their fair share.
But what's the fair share? That's what we have to determine.
I define the fair share as the nut we gotta crack. And connectivity is not a word that is acceptable, I don't care. But there's gotta be something other than one size fits all.
And I argue too, Bob, like, even when it comes to roads, or whether it's the, you know, administrative, um, uh, u- utilities, or even the parks, there is, you know, there's a fair or, or an ante that Pelican has to pay, because they are still within the district, you can't get around them. So there is a bare minimum that Pelican will need to pay. And I think Pelican will be okay with that, as long as it's reasonable.
Yeah.
And, and Doug, Mr. Banks, uh, actually, I have been thinking, and on down that line, I've been thinking about it a lot, how, how do we determine that? And we were kind of driving, I, I actually getting ahead of myself, because we were looking at that, how do we do the parks and rec, which is what you had just mentioned? How, how do we do that in terms of usage? Which really is kind of the same way with the, with the roads. And, and unless you put, you know, a, a trip, uh, what do they call them, the little?
Recorder.
Recorder, yeah. You put it down, and you need to put them on each of the units.
Randomly pick two hundred homes in each community.
It still, it still gets expensive. But the point being is, we, the board is the one that ultimately will make that determination.
Yeah, and I think in this case, we're gonna have to literally come up with an educated percentage.
Correct.
Whether, you know, let, let's just say if it's fifteen percent, and we say, okay, yeah, we think that's reasonable. I mean, we're all for, you know, smart individuals with, with business backgrounds. I'm sure us, in, in, in relation with staff, and Russ, and you, and our experts, I'm sure we can come up with a percentage that we can say is fair and equitable and defendable, based on, you know, X, Y, and Z. And what we don't wanna do is get back to where we were in the past, which, which it does sound similar, that those percentages were just arbitrarily, you know, through, thrown out there. And we wanted to use the methodology, because that is defendable, uh, and justifiable. So we need to find something that is a number we're comfortable with, but we can also justify it based on, you know, some type of calculation, even if it's not a hard, uh, you know, hard data, like actually doing a geo-tracking or, or something along those lines. Because that's too, that's too arduous, we wouldn't be able to do that. But I think we could do it. I think we could, we could come up with a number, and we can compromise through, it might take us thirty minutes or forty-five minutes to come up with a compromise, but I think we could do something, either that's, this is the number we're gonna set, or this is the number that we're going to, um, we're gonna tier over the next three to five years in order to get us to, to whatever the number is. I, I don't know what the solution is, but I think we can do it.
Russ, I don't think the issue is the percentage. I could arbitrarily say, let's go with twenty-five, let's go with thirty, let's go with fifteen. That's not the problem.
Are you reasoning that?
It's who you're applying it to. There's the problem. Who are you applying it to, and what's the reason?
And there ought to be a differential.
It gets immensely.
If there is a logical, reasonable differential to look at one community versus another, that sounds logical to me.
And that, but the trouble is, that gets back into the very issue, we're one district.
Okay.
Right, and, but what Mr. Banks was, was saying, and, and I agree with him, maybe there's a baseline that everybody, like twenty percent, is everybody. And then we go through, and maybe use a combination of trip generation and a discount factor somewhere in there, among the rest, and how it gets allocated.
So that's my question, doesn't the trip generation already allows?
That does that.
It's already, so that's the part that I'm having an issue with, if we're using trip generation, it already gives them a discount, it's already giving a benefit.
Yeah, but then, I, I think, I, but Bobby, I think the trip generation assumes traffic in areas that.
Is equal.
Is equal, yes.
Yeah, is, they get, they go everywhere.
Yeah, that's an assumption.
That's not the reality.
And it's based on, it's based on, you know, uh, statistical reasoning, but, you know, we could say, you know, I do think there, you know, I completely agree and with, with where we're at right now, and how we need to do it appropriately, and, and using the methodology. But I would say that someone in Pelican is not gonna have the, the same, you know, traffic and, and usage and benefit as someone in Stony Brook.
So can I help with this conversation?
Yeah, go ahead.
So right now, we operate that Stony Brook pays for everything inside of their gate, Pelican pays for everything inside of their gate, for roads, for roadway expenses.
Right now, outside too.
Correct.
Road and landscaping. Okay, land, yes. Is that how we wanna?
What is that amount, hey, what's that percentage, Chelsea? I think you might be getting to something. What is that percentage in, in regard to the larger distribution?
And that's, she's, what she says is a little misleading.
Because.
Because Pelican or Stony Brook already pays the O O one and pays their share of it.
Outside, that's where she was going.
But we went, Chelsea, so.
Well, I wanna make sure that she understands.
I want her to understand what she's gonna say, just before we're finished.
Yeah, she knows.
Just make sure she understands.
Thank you. I do understand.
Get it right, you better understand.
Ed, you're gonna be outside soon.
Right, get it right.
I just wanna hear what she's gonna say.
So.
See, I like that I changed you guys around, thank you.
Ed's gonna be in the gallery soon.
So. That was a reason. You're welcome.
My, my point in bringing that up is, we have some questions here that we could easily answer, that I think are going, by, by answering those, you're going to get to the direction that you're going. So right now, Stony Brook pays for everything inside of their gate, roadway and landscaping, to their O O four budget. They pay in their proportionate share to the O O one for its, their, whatever that's percentage is of the general fund costs. So, uh, Gateway Boulevard, equally, yes.
And it's based on trip generation?
That's based on trip generation. Pelican pays for inside of their gate, they don't have roadway expenses for tree line, because that's owned by the county, we don't have an interlocal for that. They pay for the landscaping, which is also paid for by the commercial parcels. Now, do you, do you have a method you like more?
Well, hey, Chelsea, really quick, what is the percentage that Pelican pays in relation to the total, and Russ, you might, this might be a question for you. What is the current percentage that Pelican pays in relation to the total amount that Gateway? Like, if we were to look at the percentage of what Pelican pays, what percentage of that?
That's what I thought.
Is of the larger?
Nothing.
Nothing, zero.
No, 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 no.
You're asking currently, what do they currently pay, like, as of this?
No, 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 if you say Pelican, their road expense, road and landscaping today, for what they pay within Pelican, is what, is what percentage of the, of the total amount that Gateway pays?
Pelican pays one point two million for their expenses, and then the Gateway's budget, correct me if I'm wrong, Russ, is one point six. Is that correct for the roadway?
No, it's, it's two point, two point, two point two.
Two, three, three.
And recognize that it's two thirds bigger.
Almost, in terms of the budget.
You know, it's twice our size.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So you'd expect a differential.
So it's two.
Doug, Tony has a, a comment.
Just a thought, maybe it's too old, but initially, the D R I D O for Pelican Reserve required probably a plumber traffic impact statement, which indicated volumes and turn radius and trips, correct? And I'm wondering, and again, if that's something that might be useful, and if a plumber could update that based upon current conditions and actual build-out. Because when they did the D R I, they had to generate, they had to determine what the regional impact was, as well as the local road impact, correct?
In terms of total units, yeah.
From Pelican Reserve. When they did the Pelican Reserve D R I in the city of Fort Myers.
Oh, when they did the original, the D R I for Pelican Reserve, not the original Gateway.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Because there were two of them, there was one originally back in eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight.
Right.
When the Gateway D R I was established.
Which included everything.
Correct, and then there was a separate, probably, traffic impact statement and study, prepared probably in two thousand, two thousand one, two thousand two, whenever, for the Pelican Reserve D R I. Would that be helpful? And that, is it, it's just a.
Just another piece that I could.
A sense of what the impacts were determined or estimated at that time.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I think Ed Hedges has been almost jumping out of his chair to say something.
Well, he has a comment, because he.
Could we just call on him?
Well, are you gonna utilize your comments now? Because he had asked at the last meeting to speak after Russ. So either he speaks now, or he speaks after Russ.
Well, we wanna limit him, I'd like to hear what he has to say.
I just wanna make sure, because. I, I think he could add to this discussion.
So do you wanna step up to the podium, yeah? I don't have a lot of.
Am I putting him on three minutes?
Yes.
Fine.
Because he asked, there was a public comment that he.
Wait a minute, he came here on a Tuesday, he gets six.
This is a workshop, it's not public comment.
It is not. Oh, wow, well.
Just identify yourself, Ed, for me?
Okay.
So, 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 so they're not wooden, because both, because during the board workshop, there are no comments from the audience.
Unless we allow.
What I was going to say is that, under the regular meeting, he had requested to speak, and that's what I was waiting on. So that's why I was asking him, are you going to speak now, as, as if it was in the regular meeting? But now that I'm looking back, technically, he wouldn't be able to speak during the workshop, so I'm allowing him to do so.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, you have your three minutes.
First, I don't really understand why there.
So you are.
Ed Hedges, one oh five three two Azura. First, I don't really understand why there's so much focus on inside and outside the gate for Pelican. In many cases, it's a distinction without a difference. The commercial parcels outside the gate and residence areas inside the gate are all part of the city of Fort Myers Pelican Preserve Special Development Area, and they're all subject to the Pelican Preserve covenants. Regarding the roads, the engineering report identified ownership, but it really didn't identify the function. And the Pelican Preserve D R I map H, which was recently amended for the emergency access road, but if you go back to this road, it identifies the major roadways, tree line, Pelican Boulevard, Cypress Grove, Prado Boulevard, all the roads that is the landscaping budget as arterial roads that provide ingress, egress to the individual twenty-eight residential neighborhoods within Pelican. You guys keep talking as Pelican as, as if it was one neighborhood. It's not, it's twenty-eight individual neighborhoods. And those roadways are common community roadways, just like they provide the same function that Griffin Drive and Gateway Boulevard provide to Gateway. Those provide that same arterial connectivity between the residences and the commercial areas and the broader, um, state roadway system. One solution to this would be to take, separate and distinguish within Pelican neighborhood roads that are within each of the twenty-eight neighborhoods, and they aren't landscaped by, by C D D. And, and they are basically equivalent to the individual neighborhoods over here in Gateway. And then treat these arterial roads as community roads, equivalent to Get Griffin.
And Gateway.
Gateway and the other C D D roads over there. And then you could have, if you want everybody to pay for all the community roads, fine, split it two thirds, you know. everybody to pay for all the community roads, fine, split it two thirds, you know, Gateway could pay two thirds of Pelican's community road expenses. We can pay one third of Gateway's community road expenses. But the inside, the outside the gate is kinda nonsensical from when you look at the function of the roads. And when you realize that Pelican isn't one neighborhood, that gatehouse is just a common gatehouse for all 28. We can't keep anybody out. Everybody has individual neighborhoods. One other thing, while I'm up here-
I'll give you the same thing for today.
All, all the, all the expenses that Russ identified doesn't include them all. There's some in operations, the staff labor, there's electricity for the streetlights on Pelican. So there's other expenses in the operations that weren't included in the landscaping and the security budgets. Anyway, my time's up.
Thank you, Ed.
The, the thing I've got about that is I understand totally what he's saying. And if you can do that, I'm gonna take and declare three of my roads in Gateway Greens, same thing. They connect by 16, 18, 20 communities, same thing. So you can put mine in the pile too. And you're gonna have every association in this community doing the same thing.
Are they all wide open, Ed? I don't know.
You can't do that. You can't do that. I'll vote against that every time.
No, I just asked the question, are all these communities, uh, wide open to the public?
Yeah, anybody can come in, anybody can come in.
Okay, you can't stop me if I wanna go in.
They can be a guest, they can be whatever they want, club member, you name it, they can come in.
Yeah, I didn't know that. I thought you had-
You just can't play that private deal, because you got-
No, you say they are-
It's not fair and equitable.
Well, you're saying they're open, Bobby said they're not.
They're not open, right?
You what, Ed? You could be a guest or a-
Oh, okay, you can be a guest, but they're not-
If I just ride up-
To come in and just go-
If I ride up and say, I'd just like to come in, can I do that?
No, no.
Then it's closed.
So the, so the issue is-
So they're not the same. That's an apple and an orange.
I'd much rather get back, instead of opening that can of worms, is get back to saying, we pick a, pick a percentage. Again, I don't have a problem with the tree line, the tree line and the, what do you call it, landscaping. I don't have any problem with that, because you could very well argue that that is synonymous with Griffin Drive, Commerce Lakes, and Gateway Boulevard. But the problem is, how do we rectify who benefits by it? If we would say, Pelican Reserve gets a 25% T-DUP factor applied to the total cost of what was 1,248 or 223, 223. If you get that, what keeps somebody else from coming in and saying, I want the same applied? That's where our problem is. It's driving me crazy. I can't come up with anything, anything that solves that problem, save one. And it's the very issue that got us in this mess in the first place, connectivity.
Well, it's-
We're just going in circles.
So to answer Bob's question, I think, and you started, you started the question, I think we, if we can get consensus from the board. So, part of this assessment methodology is to ratify processes that we have done informally for many years, and actually make them formal.
Codify.
It caught, yes, exactly. So, tree line was a perfect example. So if we can get direction from the board, so now we are not obligated by any interlocal, until my knowledge, I'll let Tony chime in if, if he says otherwise, by the DRI approval for the maintenance of tree line from Pelican Preserve Boulevard to Colonial. Now, we've chosen to do that because we've set a higher standard level of service. If we would like to continue to do that, then we would like to set that as the direction. And then, from that point, we can have Russ work with determining the benefit. Continue to be all of the commercial parcels, it could be everybody in Gateway, because it's a, a common road, an arterial road. Uh, so if we can start with that basic question, do we wanna continue to maintain landscaping on tree line from Pelican Preserve Boulevard all the way to Colonial?
And the simple answer from the community point of view is, absolutely.
And, and I have absolutely no problem. I use tree line, I go down that road all the times, a lot of times. So I have absolutely no argument that that road is not a community road.
So we wanna con, okay.
So I would agree to take the landscaping component of that road, the cost, and throw it in the, the, the cost.
You're gonna have, you're gonna-
You're gonna do what cost, that's right.
In the common.
But calling for-
Well, you're saying the opposite of what I said, Ed.
So, so the Gateway road cost, what we had well ago was what, 2,233,000?
Okay, so you're putting it on outside, I get it.
I would take that landscaping and add it to that thing.
Okay.
So that everybody in Gateway pays for that.
And the Pelican residents will say the exact opposite, because it affects-
Nobody wants that. You want what you're saying.
No, I don't. We want to continue being responsible in the O-2 budget for maintaining that road. Because then we can set the standards that we want, like we always have.
So, yeah, because what he's saying is, Gateway side will pay for a portion of that, and you don't want that.
No, because we've always paid it. We're okay with paying it. We have no problem with paying it. It's in our budgets, we've been paying it 25 years.
Well, part, part of this goes to, if it's within the O-2 budget, their landscape subcommittee oversees those, those district assets.
It's the control, that's, he was very clear.
Well, it's, it's control, but it's also money. But I mean, we make sure it stays to the level that we want.
If it's money, then you wanna, you wanna take that burden from your residents. If it's just money, then you would allow the Gateway side to pay for a portion of that, because we do use it. But it's mainly control, because you want a certain look.
To keep the look rate, that's correct.
It's, it's, it's a control that you're willing to pay for.
It's an extremely important part of our community.
And when you come out of that gate, you have no choice. You have to go on tree line. You either go left or you go right. I mean, it's not like there's another road that you can get.
A choice.
It's, that's it.
And again, that's why I said, I have no problem with paying the landscaping cost of that, including it in the common area road budget.
You keep going back to the common area road. We are diametrically opposed to that.
You're, you're what?
Not in favor of that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to take and take some of the costs-
Yeah.
-that are over there and put it in a shared cost deal. And I don't know any other way of doing it. That's the only one I can.
Leave it like-
Well, here, here's what we need to do. So, we understand what the costs are. I think we're all in agreement that, um, you know, Pelican does need to pay some portion. We need to figure out what the, what that portion is. And I think if we can all maybe brainstorm a little bit, maybe Russ can get creative. And at some point, we need to come back with options, whether we each have our own recommendation, or there is an option, and we will vote and agree on what that, what that option is. We're just debating back and forth today, and I don't think we're gonna, you know, we're, we're at a point where we have any solid recommendation that the majority would support. Um, but I think we will have it, uh, at some point in the near future.
We're, we're on a good path, and we're now talking about alternative ideas. I like-
And I would say, Bob, you and Carol and, and Pelican, if you can look at what you would be comfortable with, and something that you could justify, um, you know, because you're looking at it because it's your community, and you're, you have, you know, direct impact. And then, I think the other board members, along with Russ, or maybe even staff, you know, can look at, you know, our own recommendations. And if we can come up with a couple, I'm sure we can come up with a compromise that'll work, that's, that's justifiable and calculatable.
Yes, Russ.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, Carol.
So, you said we could do what ifs. So you've given us the what if on your first question back there. You've given us the what if for if everything is, is put into one silo, correct?
That first one was, do we separate landscaping, which is what, Mr. Geppert mentioned.
So give, can you give us the numbers for our next meeting if we don't?
If you, if you separate them?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I, actually, I could probably do it now, because I think it's the last two after that. I think we're getting confused.
But anyway.
There's three silos, guys. There's three silos.
Ed, that's our choice, how many silos we want.
There's three silos. There's the O-1, there's the O-2, and then there's the shared silo of the common area maintenance. That's the problem, and that's what we're, we're discussing.
I'm talking about the three silos-
I don't think we have any two on two of those.
The three silos of the methodology, which is water, admin, and roads. Those could be four.
I'm talking about just on roads. There are three cost components. There are the cost components of things within Gateway. There are cost components of the things that are within, uh, Pelican Reserve, and then there's this common area. That's where we're at right now.
No, no, what about landscaping, Ed? You're totally ignoring the, the kickout landscaping.
But I don't think that's in your benefit to do that.
Well, I don't know if it is or isn't. I'd just like to see what it-
Okay, um-
So, can, can you do that for our next meeting?
Yeah, let, let me, let me bring up something first here. Mr. Geppert makes a very good point, that there are arterial roads inside of Pelican Reserve, and then there are neighborhood roads inside of Pelican Reserve. Maybe, and haven't looked at it this way, but maybe we take, and I, and I've asked the engineer to give me the road miles, both at Gateway, both at Pelican Reserve, so I can calculate a per road mile budget. So we know what it is on a per road mile budget. So what we can do then is, is measure the arterial roads inside of Pelican Reserve, and then we have the roads here that we're measuring, and we put them all in the one bucket, and do it by trip generation.
And Stony Brook.
And Stony Brook, across the board.
Who's arterial roads are those?
I'm sorry?
Whose arterial roads are those?
Districts.
District.
District owns them, inside of Pelican Reserve.
I've got a map of all Lee County roads, and it does not show Pelican Reserve's roads as being arterial, because they're not in Pelican, in Gateway, in Lee County.
They're in the city of Fort Myers.
So, but my, that's my question, are they arterial roads in the city of Fort Myers?
Yes, yes.
They are, they are assigned as arterial, arterial roads in the Pelican Reserve DRI.
For the, for the city of Fort Myers?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so, and, but it's, so it's not all the roads in there?
Oh, I understand.
And, and what I'm saying, if we can measure those and measure the gateways and put-
I'm just a little surprised by the definition of an arterial road.
Yeah.
That does not meet the definition. That's why I'm a little concerned about that.
Goes back to the DOR codes.
I can understand it being a collector road, but I cannot understand it from an engineering perspective, being an arterial on a gated community.
Right.
Never heard of it.
Okay, so for our next meeting, can you give us that also?
Well, that's, that's one of the ways I think we should take a look at this, because that would take care of what Doug was talking about, because we're still using the trip generation. That's, that's a factor. And that's a good-
And that's a good number.
Yeah, absolutely. So, if we can take a look and get those two budgets, put them together and say, here's what it is on a per unit basis, then we'll know at that point.
We'll have more data to make a decision.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna give us two what ifs at the next meeting?
Well, I can give you one of the what ifs. I can give you one of the what ifs today. And that is if we separate landscaping.
Well, I, okay.
And that, that'll take care of-
Do you have it on paper?
Of course I do. Go past it, there we go.
Want to marry?
Uh, yeah. Uh, oh, that's it, Pelican Reserve.
So where are you gonna throw it if you separate it? Get the admin?
No, no, the landscaping?
Will it be stand on its own, is it its own separate deal?
Yeah, that's what you want.
Yeah, it would stand, it would stand on its own.
It's a one to one factor then?
Then, then everybody gets a one.
You don't wanna do that.
Yeah, because-
Well, I don't know, do I look at it?
Well, what I, what I'm saying is if, I didn't make a print a copy of this one. Hang on a minute.
We may not.
I got it, I got it, hang on.
This, that was not in our package.
No, that's correct. That is correct. But what I did was I took out, this is the-
Pelican.
This is the Pelican one, the factors of allocation.
Yeah, Pelican just landscaping.
Of the Gateway landscaping, right?
No.
So-
Of just Gateway landscaping.
Yeah, so this is an example of, of Mr. Geppert, where I took the landscaping out of the Gateway. So it's just the roads in Gateway and just the landscaping. So I separated them, okay? So if you do, do it on this, go to, is that the first one?
No, it's the second.
Go to the first one, please. Here's the roads, just the roads alone. You would only be paying $32 per unit for the roads. And then, then if I did the landscaping, I'll go to the landscaping one, and there, if we did it on an equal, per one basis, you're gonna pay a hundred, how much is a hundred ninety?
Ninety-two dollars.
Hundred ninety-two plus thirty is 220 versus 114.
You've lost me in all these, um-
I separated the budgets, that budget, the Gateway budget. This is, this is as if you were just gonna pay for the Gateway side.
Okay.
Okay? I took that budget, and I took, I split the, the landscaping one side, and all the road costs on the other. Remember, we had two categories. I did that. Now, if you take the roadways, and I, and so that roadway budget was 628,000, that's the road part of that, of the roadway budget. And then I divided it by the trips. So there, so you came up with $32.04 per unit over Pelican Reserve, just the road. That's the street lights, that's the maintenance of the roads. Then I did the second one, go to the second one, and I took the landscaping budget, but that was split based on parcel. So it was one EAU per parcel.
And we're talking about this split from the 2.3 million. Is that what we're talking about, the 600?
Yeah, split the 2.3 million.
Yeah.
233 divided again to two components.
And then I divided it by all the parcels equally, because that would be the do, the way to do the landscaping, other than, how are you gonna do landscaping, trip generation?
Where is the Pelican landscaping budget in this?
This is, I'm just giving you an idea right now, because I haven't done the other part of that yet. What I've done, this is strictly, um-
The total, the overall.
Yeah, I'm counting as fast as I can, but I'm not keeping up.
Time out, time out, time out, time out. This is just the Gateway portion. Remember the first analysis I did, it said it was $114 per unit? Remember that? It said 114, based on trip generation. Of, that would be your $500,000 portion that came over to Pelican.
I follow you.
Yeah.
Does, does that make sense? I mean, so what, what is?
Okay, could we get copies of this, please?
Of those last two slides?
Am I the only one, is this, this?
Yeah, because they were not included.
Pelican pays a million a year for landscaping. I don't know what you pay over here. If you put those two things together, is that what we're saying?
No. Pelican is-
That's where I'm getting confused. I've got a disconnect.
Pelican is, your inside the gate, or your Pelican budget is not included in this number.
Because it's all O-2.
This is strictly, remember originally, we said, okay, now, now Pelican Reserve is going to share, whatever the benefit is, overall, of, of the Gateway side of the budget, the common roads over here. So that was the two point.
And if we do that, it comes to $32?
No, if you do that, it comes to $114. Remember that number, the 114?
Where's that?
Is that, it's?
Two hundred charts.
Which slide?
No, it's not that one.
Before or after?
Um, no, it's, keep going down.
Down, other way?
Yep.
There it is.
There it is, right there. So what I did is I took the Pelican Preserve allocation of the Gateway roads. So that was the-
That is, keep it in.
So remember, we added up those four?
Not the separation, thirteen percent.
You pay more.
Yeah.
You pay a lot more.
You pay a lot more if we separate the budget. That's the point.
Because everybody is treated as a one, whereas if you're doing it on trip generation, you're at the lesser, you're at the percentage of it.
Yeah.
Any numbers, okay. I, I, quite, I can't follow it, but I'd like to, and I'll be okay.
To be honest with you, it's like $100 less per unit if you keep them together. Because your trip generation-
But, but when you're saying keep them together, that's the outside the gate.
That's the Gateway side, correct.
Gateway and Pelican, together.
Too many vowels in the air, I can't talk enough.
You lost the advantage of your 4.3.
Trip generation, yeah.
That's what you did. You lost the advantage of the trip generation.
Right.
Which you'll get a discount.
And if we go to the what if number three, which is what Ed was talking about, defining the arterials from the community. the arterials from the community.
That would be the one I would bring next time. Right, because we still have to do those calculations.
Can you bring that to us next time?
Yeah, that's.
And you're going to want estimated cost of those from me?
Well, I'm going to do it, I'm going to, no.
That's going to be the hard one.
No, 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 no.
Let's be clear, will I?
Cancel Laura's vacation.
I will get, I will get the arterial road measurement from the engineer, which is where all, mostly your landscaping is.
Right.
And I will do that.
But the budget portion, because you're tying it to the budget. So you're, you're going to be, just like you did with the flowways, you're going to say, how much is the maintenance of these specific items?
Correct. And if you, if you look inside Pelican, you're inside of Pelican right now, where is most of your landscaping? It's on the arterials, right? So.
All of it is.
Bingo. So I'm going to take that budget that I have here and divide it by the road miles of arterial that you have. So I know what a road mile is there. I'm going to do the same for gateway. Then we will combine them and we will figure out, and then we'll do it on the trip generation basis.
I was really with you until you threw in the trip generation.
Okay. You're at four point four or four point three.
That, that is heading toward a compromise.
Yeah.
That's heading toward a compromise.
Absolutely.
And that eliminates that issue of trying to pick a percentage and pick a reason for the percentage.
Right.
At least that has something that might hold water.
Well, and we have bases for it because it's, it's an arterial, we have those roads and we can use that number, and then we can use the number over here and use the trip generation.
You can always show the road budget by the miles of non-arterial versus arterial.
Right, and that's, that's the next measurement that I need to do.
We complain about not being able to do transcription.
No minutes?
No minutes, so yeah.
But regardless, all of the roadways are, regardless if they're defined as arterial or collector or local, they are still owned by the district.
Correct.
And we still have responsibilities to maintain those.
Correct. That's correct.
But the maintenance of that, we're really talking the roadway, not the landscaping.
We're talking about allocation of operation and maintenance cost, period.
Of the road.
Not about how it's done or any of that other stuff. It's allocation of costs.
So you're good with the direction from us?
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know what I need to do now. I mean, that.
Good, I'll call you and you can explain to me.
Another hour.
I think that, that, that makes more sense of heading to a compromise on this issue than anything we've said so far.
Yeah, I agree.
So from what I heard is we all agree to continue to maintain tree line, we just don't know where, what pot. That's what I heard.
I think we've all agreed.
I think when, when we get Bob to understand it, I think the offer I'm making is advantageous. His issue is, is the control of what the work is going to be done.
See.
I'm just saying that what the work is done, the cost is shared cost.
We're just.
I'm not arguing about what you do or how you do it. I'm just saying the cost that you incur is shared cost.
Yeah.
No, I have not agreed to that. I want to see the numbers.
It's.
From, but from our perspective, we, we are to include it moving forward. What pot will be determined at a future date?
What are we including, Chelsea?
Tree line, the maintenance of tree line.
Well, it's always been a main.
I know, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to go get an interlocal agreement to make sure that we make sure, we codify it.
Yeah, so if, if it's within.
Well, if we, excuse me, we don't change anything, why do we need it interlocal?
Just like we had to do all of your landscape maintenance easements, we need to make this, we need to make this right.
To codify it.
To codify.
But.
Do I need to? Yeah, I, I think. Yeah, it was enough.
That's why we put you over there.
There you go.
Russ, did you have anything else for the road goal before you work on that and give it?
Look happy.
I'm okay. That's why we do this. I mean, that's why we do this.
If, oh, hold on, Carol.
Well, wait, yeah, I'll get to it in just a minute.
Russ, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, Mr. Geppert, what will happen is the maintenance will stay the same, whether that pot gets put into the Pelican Preserve or the gateway GF001 won't matter because it's going to be spread among everybody.
It may not matter to you.
Well, no, 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 let, let me finish. It'll still be at the level that you want it to be. It's just spread above everybody.
So that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I was thinking within that, like allow the gateway to take the burden of the financial side and you still would have control.
Well, you'll still have control.
We will have no problem giving you all of the financial.
But, but the point being is it's going to be based on the trip generation ultimately. So the, the gateway side will have so many trips, you'll have so many trips, and that cost, whatever that cost is, to maintain it at your level, will be allocated based on trip generation. So it, it works, especially if we do the arterial roads inside.
Okay, and particularly if we take into consideration Mr. Banks's, the item he threw out there where a Pelican person may not ever sit on Gateway Boulevard and a gateway person may never sit on tree line.
And that's what we're doing.
We factor all that in there.
That's all being factored into this.
Okay.
Which like, like Mr. Tinkle had said.
We all like that idea. It's not called interconnectivity, but it might yield a similar result.
But what is happening is because now we're spreading among the trip generation inside both, both of them we're putting together, which seems to be a very good compromise for that. And that accounts for that.
I'll see how it ends up.
That's definitely in your interest.
Let's see how it looks.
And so just to confirm, I, because I want clear direction for us, we are not going to silo out landscaping as its own silo.
Oh, no. I wouldn't right now.
No, no.
It's not right now.
He was, but he was going to give us the numbers if we did, right?
I did.
But we can always come back to it.
Yeah.
At some point, if we do decide we want to silo out. But as of right now, no.
Okay. Yeah, and, and the point being is it's not beneficial because of your trip generation number versus the other side.
Obviously, I like everything to be beneficial, but I really want to understand it.
I'll wait and see Russ's.
I, I understand.
And then determine.
I understand.
Did we answer all of your questions up here, Russ?
Um, let me see, hang on a minute. What about, well, number two is, we're, we're doing that now. We're doing number two by including the arterial, the arterial roads inside and that budget.
Yes.
Number two.
Carol, can you, Carol, can you please just, if you'd like to speak, I'll allow you, but I'll ask you to stand up. But Tony has a.
Just to think for clarification, I think we need to double check whether or not internal road network and the roads in Pelican Preserve are in fact arterials under the city of Fort Myers Conference of Plan that identifies the arterials, principal arterials, minor arterials, collectors. I think that's important.
Can you do that or that would be Ross?
Yeah, we're grinding with Ross.
What are you saying? You've already checked it?
Well, I'm looking at the future land use map and they identify the arterials, but I, I just want to double check it. I just want to take the time to do that.
The engineer, we'll have the engineer double check that.
And, and we're talking.
They may not be considered arterials on the, because if you look in the definition in the city of Fort Myers codes, I'm quickly looking it up and caveat, it says as defined and described in the conference of plan. You go to the conference of plan, then it does not appear, just my really quick look here, that the last amended through two thousand nineteen, the transportation element of future land use is not an arterial within Pelican Preserve.
What does it say?
It doesn't identify them.
Then you default back to the DORI.
So follow up with that because we won't have an answer now, so you'll have this tomorrow?
No.
But let's do.
I've got to do my other one.
Let's do this. Whether or not, God, I wish I'd never said this, whether or not they are arterials, do the calculation for the roads that we believe they're arterials.
Yeah, okay. Let's do that. Yeah, that makes sense because, because then we're not doing the neighborhood roads, we're just doing.
Logically, they are arterials.
Yeah, from, from a logical perspective, that makes sense.
All right.
And I'm good with that. So that answers the second question. The third one, should Stony Brook roads be treated the same way? But see, they're not arterial, they don't have an arterial that goes everywhere and they do already.
They have one main road.
Yeah.
One main road and then it goes all the way around? Is that the only road?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, it's a street, it's a street network that's internal only to that development.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So maybe, do we include, do we include that?
Boulevard from the main gate all the way back to that very last road.
Yes.
Would be in that same.
Would be like, yeah.
Considerate vein, would be that same deal.
And for the record, Lee County has an administrative code where they define the category of roads.
Well, I've got a map of the arterials in gateway and unfortunately, there's only two. That's gateway and grid, there's none of those.
There, there is another point that you had made, this two lane versus four lane because generally, because the ones that we're determining it within Pelican Preserve are four lane, right?
Correct.
Is that done?
Okay.
That's what we're determining.
Well, the bridge, it's two, Pelican Preserve Boulevard does have a component that narrows down to two lanes.
We'll include Stony Brook, Pebblebrook Boulevard as well as part of that calculation.
Okay.
And then, did the last one get answered?
Uh, should the properties outside of Pelican Preserve be included with GF002 or GF001? That can be decided later.
Okay.
What you're talking, C5?
Yeah, C5, yeah.
Commercial.
And commercial.
And the commercials.
Go, Russ.
Did we accomplish? Thank you.
Yes.
That's why we do this.
Well, you're going to come back to us.
Well, the nice thing is you do it now so that you can explain to the people why you did what you did.
Yeah, exactly. I got that part, just the timeframe. We'll get there.
There's no problem with the time. We can push.
Do you guys want a five minute break or you just want to?
Well, I think we just took it.
We took it, yeah.
Maybe Carol Brockie would like to say something also?
Under, under the work role, under the workshop or under the comments of the meeting?
Yes.
Are you, are you?
That's, I, I just need to know for what that she wants to speak on.
Roads.
I need a, do you have your sheet?
That's not, okay, just.
Thank you. Did you write, did you even write what it was about? Roads.
Because they won't be included on the workshop minutes, that's what I'm trying to say. If they speak on the minutes.
We don't have a workshop. This is a regular meeting.
But, no, this is the part of the workshop.
It is not. We did not have a workshop at the last meeting.
Oh, we didn't.
This was separated out, yeah.
You, you were saying.
Yes.
You were saying.
Thank you, Bob. Next chat I'm going to get you is like closer to the end of the door.
Okay.
Put it under public comment if you want to.
Yes.
Whatever you want.
So your name?
Okay. Carol Brockie, Pelican Preserve. My main question is, you know, what I heard today was that Pelican needs to pay for gateway roads. I mean, all Pelican roads are public roads. They are all owned by the district and therefore if we pay for gateway roads, gateway roads, gateway needs to pay for Pelican roads.
Well, then I'll just quickly beat all of my roads in gateway greens if you do that and then you can pay for mine.
It's.
That's not right.
But Ed, they, your roads in your neighborhood are private roads.
I don't care, I'll quickly deed them to avoid a million dollar expenditure.
But, you know, what you expect of us, it's not fair that we can't expect from, from you. And, and our roads are all public roads and they're all owned by gateway and they, they are part of one gateway. This is what we keep hearing, we want to be one gateway. So it has to be fair.
Then all the Pelicans or Stony Brooks would be the same way.
But we're looking at it.
And then, then you want everybody in gateway is going to do the same thing. That, that dog ain't going to hunt, I can just tell you that right now.
Well, I'm just, I'm sharing what people, people need to hear and people need to understand that when you expect something of us, we expect something from you and it has to be fair. That's it.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay, I need to leave this meeting at five o'clock. That doesn't mean you have to stop the meeting, but I need to leave at five o'clock.
We just have a couple of agenda items. So for the eleven B, I never received an updated TA from Tetra Tech.
You what?
I never received an updated TA from Tetra Tech.
For the inspection? Because we had six ponds that are now down to two, but we got four out for bid right now. What's the timeline for the four that are out, come back in?
Um, I'll have, I can get back to you. They, they went out, they went out today.
They were in the paper today.
They went out today.
So if they're going to be back within the two, next two weeks, just wait till the fifth and then we will know what.
No, they have to be out on the street for thirty days.
Okay.
So it'll be in January. So if any, the, the new TA will come to you. If I don't get it by tomorrow, it'll be on your January second meeting. I did follow up twice with them, asking for.
Because we're, we're just going to turn around and come back and do the same thing again in January if we go with a good bid.
So if you can table it to January second.
Okay.
We need a motion to that. I'll make a motion to re-table eleven B to the January meeting.
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it's the first meeting in January, correct?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, eleven C.
Who's making the presentation here?
Um, so I guess, just going back to the last meeting, so we just needed an answer from Pedro, right? I guess, so what is the answer? We'll start with that.
I'm trying to get to that thing. You can only, what we borrowed, you can only use up to the three point six two and that if you move money, you can move money within that admin category, but if you choose to have additional borrowings or to change how it's assessed, you have to take out a new supplemental trust indenture.
Okay.
Okay, what's that mean?
Um.
Yeah.
That means we would look at the master trust indenture, the fifty-five million dollar validation, and we would look at that admin category and that admin building cost. And if you wanted to take out additional funding to pay for the, the cost, you would have to do a whole nother supplemental trust indenture and go through the public hearing process.
Engineers report.
Engineers report.
But does, is the fifty-five still stay fifty-five and you're just shutting, shaking numbers up internally?[1411.04]
Within the admin category, yes.
Okay, so it could be done?
Yes.
What's the timeline? That's the critical.
Well, women, what else is in the admin category?
The FPL.
In other words, from the admin category, where, where are you thinking you're going to take this money from?
I'd have to pull up the master engineers report.
So you need, what, the difference between 6, 9 and 3, 6? 6, 9 and 3, 6? We got cash now.
We, well, that's what I'm saying, if you wanted to borrow additional money, that is an alternative.
But that is, that is an option, but it's not a-
Yes. We have the cash flow, other than a five-year bank loan for the enterprise fund, to pay for the admin building.
So do we, then, do we don't need to go back then to do what you just described?
No, not for the admin building.
Okay, well then.
I prefer no.
If we don't need to go back to the admin building, then we don't have an issue on the admin building.
Yes.
So the only issue we have is what was introduced was this outside deal with leasing a piece of property. So now it's down truly a comparison of leasing versus building, correct? There's nothing, Tony, is that correct? There's nothing that stands in the way of right now, if we would decide to go ahead, straight ahead with the building of the building.
We're talking the admin building separately than the parks and-
Kick the parks separate, that's a whole different issue. If we wanted to go ahead right now with the admin building, we could do it, and there's nothing that stands in our way to, to do that.
I guess the question is, as far as the amount of monies and where they're available, I think Chelsea's been working more with Steven on Bloom on that. I've not really gotten into the weeds on the sources of the funds.
For the admin building?
For the admin building.
Again, we have the cash flow to pay for Pelican's 14%, General Funds 27%. The only deficit would be the 59% for the enterprise fund, which we would need to take out a five-year bank loan at a five, it's about a 5%.
Okay, but the issue we started out with, you were talking about something that we have to go back and redo these calculations. That's not applicable to the admin building.
Correct.
So then there is nothing then that stands in the way of the admin building? That's my question.
From a financial standpoint, I don't believe so, but then additionally, there's a discussion about whether we can borrow or utilize some connection fees, utility connection fees, to help pay for some of the capital costs of that building or the utility building.
That doesn't impact the bond?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
That's separate and apart from the bond. And we're working with Tony Hairston of Raftellus to come up with that, meeting the dual rational nexus test to be able to use those funds because of the increased demands on the system over the last X number of years, which result in additional space requirements to accommodate the staff necessary to operate the system. You know, it's a dual rational nexus.
Okay, so then the only issue we-
Correct, Chelsea, so we have the money, basically.
Yes.
With the five-year, with the borrowing.
With the borrowing, yes.
Okay, then that impacts basically the enterprise fund?
Yes.
Okay, so if we're there, then the only issue we have is to get off the table to be able to figure out where we're going, is are we going to look at this lease or are we going to stick with the admin building?
Madam Chair, just one other caveat. Chelsea, from the standpoint of the five-year borrowing, do we have a term sheet yet? A written term sheet?
Steven Bloom has a, has a term sheet.
Okay, when will the board see that?
Depends on if they want to move forward with the financing through that, and if they do, then it'll come back at the next board meeting.
Okay.
That's just, that's, that, all that is, is a five-year P and I issue. That's all it is.
Right, I just want to make sure the board's aware of all the details, you know, that whatever the upfront fees are, the attorney's fee, you know, those kind of costs that are part of that.
What, what I was worried about is that if we go to, what, we're talking about basically 2 million bucks, as I recall? 1.6, 1.2, 2.0, something like that?
1.6 for the, you, the delta, the shortfall for the enterprise.
Shortfall for the utility.
1.6, a little over 1.6.
So if we take 1.6 divided by 5, add in the interest, do we have a bond, bond reserve on that 25%?
I, I don't know if they would have capitalized interest on those five years, usually they, I don't know, get to look at the terms.
Yeah, we have to look at the terms.
Well, I just want to make sure the Raftellus understands that instead of having a 20-year financing deal, we're going to be dealing with a five-year, and for five years, that's going to whack our rates.
Yes, I went over it for an hour today with Tony.
Just to make sure everybody understands.
Tony Hairston.
Tony Hairston.
Thank you.
Probably you at some point in an hour.
What does that mean, rack our rates?
Then it sounds like to me then, all that we need to do is try to figure out what impact this West Links rental has on it, because I've never seen such a, this, this analysis we got today in the, the deal.
What's the rack our rates?
I mean, this is the most confusing thing I've ever seen in my life. We don't need to break this down to Gateway, and Pelican, and utility, it's building versus rental, period.
That's what I thought.
And, and this is just making this absolute a nightmare. What I read is, is that, just based on the way Laura did do it, not check, checking or challenging the numbers, it shows that at 22 years, we're basically at break even without counting equity.
Yes.
And if we would take it for the next 10 years, it's going to flip-flop to be very advantageous to the building, because we're not paying P and I anymore. And at the end of the period, we have equity. So my thing to looking at this is that while this is nice, I just don't see any sense of pursuing this lease any further.
When you said rack our rates, what did you mean?
I'm sorry?
You used the phrase early on before you got into the third tire rate, rack our rates, what were you talking about?
Well, when we did the original calculation back six months, eight months ago, Raftellus was basically, based on an assumption that we could use connection fee money?
No, no, not totally.
And we're talking utility, water and sewer rates, fees and charges.
Basically, to summarize, we had, just like Pelican did, just like the General Fund, we under budgeted for what the actual cost came in. And our rates, we had planned on putting seven, taking $700,000 out of the utility reserves and then rebuilding that over the four years. So we have a bigger shortfall. And so through some strategic moves, our rates will cover it for sure for, for the first year, maybe year two. We'll have to look and either reprioritize some of our capital projects for the enterprise fund and delay those, or maybe get grant monies. But we are covered with regards to doing a short-term bank loan, and that is what was recommended by our rate consultant.
Okay.
Okay.
But the base price, oh, I'm sorry, the price is still, it went from 3.6 to 5 million to what we're looking at now is, is 8 million, right?
No, 6.9 million ballpark is what the number is for the building.
Okay, 7 million.
And you know there's going to be add orders, so just 7 million. Okay, if, if we did the lease, just like the, what you're discussing with the, with building, does utilities pay 59% of the lease amount every year? Does Pelican pay 14% of the lease amount every year? Does Gateway pay?
27, whatever.
Is every year? Is it the same percentage, is it the same places of paying if you lease?
No, it's only, only those 59, 14, 27 until the next analysis. It could change.
Okay, okay. But my point is, you don't just take the whole lease amount and throw it into administration.
So the difference is, yes, so-
Pay it that way, you've got to pay it from the departments that are going to be housed there, just like you would in the other building, correct?
So the, the biggest difference between the two is the lease would come out of your operations and maintenance budget every year, and that is determined by the assessment methodology. So right now, it's 59, 14, 27.
Right.
With the capital construction, it has, with, that has been 59, 14, 27 as well. So if, as we're going through the O and M assessment methodology, if you change that percentage, then every year, when you do, when we do our budget, those percentages would reflect that change.
Okay, I think the point I'm trying to make is, if you look at, and I'm just going to use today's numbers, 59% of 280 some odd thousand is a whole lot less than what principal and interest and all those other things are going to be. And we don't have an answer back about whether we could have a right of first refusal or any of the other things that might happen. I mean, I understand that this is a gentleman who wants to use this property as investment property and gain the benefits from it. I understand that. But at some point, things change in people's lives. People die, people move on, people get divorced and the, and the wife gets the building instead of him, or whatever. Lots of things happen in life. And if you're looking at a 20-year period with a lease and whatever, you're going to pay a whole lot less every year than you are if you spend this $7 million.
Not if you look at it in 20 years.
Not, not if you look at past, long-term.
If utilities has to pay their share, Pelican has to pay their share, it's a whole lot less than it is in principal and interest and everything else.
Well, the numbers that Laura, while I don't agree the way she put them together, I agree with what their totals are, and the deal is that at 22 years is break even. After that, after that, it's lopsided as hell to have owned your own building, really lopsided. And in fact, any of these other years, you could take at any time and say you still have equity in your building. It just makes no sense to be leasing this with the unknowns of, at the end of 10 years, in which we could get a lease with maybe two-year, five, two, five-year supplements. We still are trusting that this guy doesn't change his mind. I mean, it's that simple. He could go up and say, I want to sell this building, I got an offer that I can't refuse. Bye, and then we're stuck.
And if we had a right of first refusal, but he wasn't willing-
I, I asked, I never received an answer on that.
Yeah. So that's, my thing is, is that the numbers are just-
Because when we talked, she was, then, I was the last one there. It was pretty clear to me that it was, this is what we offer. I wasn't even surprised at what intent that we got today.
And the letter, those numbers that we sent out yesterday do not reflect the letter of intent that I received late last night.
I, I looked at that, that didn't have much to do with it, didn't change it that much.
It made, it made it $18.50 a square foot for the first five years, whereas the first offer, we had at least a 10-year, 10-year rates on it.
Yeah, so, but again-
Yeah, and I, I was trying to think of the cost, like, I feel like unanimously, we have, and I have never spoken behalf of all of us, but we have said over and over, over the years, that we are in the position that we are because previous board did not think of, on the future, they thought very short-term, very, very, and we all agreed with that. And then here we are on the position that we can do the same thing and let the people 15, 10 years down the road figure it out, because that's what they did to us. I mean, I've been here since '06, so, or we can make the change. To me, when it came to the value and the dollar that we had no equity, that spoke really high with me. And the fact that I don't want to leave the residents of Gateway, not just the ones that are here, but the ones that are coming to here with the burden or trying to figure it out, because it's not going to get cheaper if there was a, so, so-
But Flavia, one of the things you said early on was that there, in the new building, there isn't a whole lot of room for expansion. You even mentioned it, that you were only, there was only maybe two offices that wouldn't be occupied right away. So if down the road, if 10 years from now, you need a bigger building, you're going to have to add on or do something else over there.
Well, we have, we have equity with that building, that's a different story. We have equity, we have money-
You're going to have plenty of space over there, plenty of space.
But we have way too much space.
You can grow into it, all kinds of ways.
But then we're going with if he allows us to, like, he wasn't even willing to do a 20-year lease, he's, it's 10-year, and I asked that question, it was 10 years, five and five, not even 10, 10. And he was really adamant about it. I just don't want to put the residents of Gateway in the same position that we were four years ago, eight years ago, and 12 years ago, because-
And if you had a building and somebody was interested in it, wouldn't you give them the highest price you possibly could?
Our people, our people in this community expected a 4,700 square foot building two years ago. We, we morphed it to a 9,100 square foot building. I don't even want to go out and try to explain to them why, why renting a 15,000 square foot building. It makes no sense.
Okay, I add to your point, when we first presented this, it was 2.5 million. I was fully going with you.
I'm sorry?
What, it was, am I not speaking clearly? When we started this discussion, it was 2.5 million. It got to 3.6, I was still behind it. Then the bids came in at 5.5 or something. And now we rebid, and now we're pushing 7, 8 billion, right?
No, it's, that's, that's not true.
Well, then tell me what I said wrong.
It was 3 points, it was 3.6 million, which was inclusive of the $800,000 we were going to pay for the land. We then found out that we could come up here and we saved the $800,000 land cost.
So it's back to 3.6?
I'm sorry.
So it's back to 3.6?
Well, 3.6 is what we had.
That's what we said.
And then we started going on and the thing morphed. And all of a sudden, we have a building, it's 9,100 square feet, it is what it is. The issue is, the construction cost of the building is 5.7. The soft costs and contingencies take it to the 6.9.
You use the phrase all the time, all costs, you were always saying, what are all the costs? Put in the operating costs, put in all this. I'm still okay at the 5.5. If we can't afford a 9,100 square foot building, let's cut it. But I can't support a $7 million building. I will not support that.
I, I just-
Let's cut the building size.
I don't see any way in the world without spending a hell of a lot of money to cut the building size. I mean, for, for-
It's going to cost us a hell of a lot of money to build a building.
See how you're going to do it. It'll cost a lot of money.
Cut the building and come back with a much lower number, and I will support it.
If I had an easy way of doing that, Bob, I would agree with you.
Well, you know-
I'm not, I'm not in favor of cutting the building. It doesn't meet our needs. Cutting the building doesn't meet our needs.
I'm sorry, Doug?
He said the rented building does not meet our needs.
So, cutting the building size?
Cutting.
Doesn't meet our, doesn't meet our needs.
I agree with that.
Well, so where, where are we at right now?
And I, and I think that the bigger, the bigger thing we need to look at is what is the impact to the residents? The 5.5, and then we've got the total, there's O and M and other things that we're calculating in, what is the impact to the residents? How much is it going to cost a resident, you know, each year for the next 20 years? And do we think that amount is reasonable against the needs of the district? And that amount is, what is it, less than $100, Ed?
That's ballpark to where we're at, $100.
$100.
So we need, so we need to decide, we need a motion either to go ahead and move forward with the rental, or the motion to go ahead and move forward with building the building? That's what we're doing.
I make a motion, we go ahead with the-
I tried to, I tried to make the lease work, and I was looking at, long-term, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't make sense. The loss in equity and, and the, the unknown, to me, long-term doesn't, doesn't make sense. I was trying, I really was trying to make the short-term, make the short-term work, five years. Delay the building, give us time to, you know, look at, you know, maybe the costs will go down, but that's not going to happen. The cost, if we delay building the building, the cost will not go down. And at the end of the day, after the five years, if we leased, we would end up spending more to build the building, which would put us in, in a worse position. I have really tried to figure out a way to lease, because I like the building. It's way bigger than what we need.
I like the building.
So we can get into it quick, but when I look at the numbers, even for a three-year or five-year solution, knowing that that's not a permanent solution, just the numbers just do not make sense. And I really tried for it to make sense, and it just don't, in my opinion.
So Doug, in your opinion, we can't, you wouldn't support a smaller building? Say we didn't have the, the board-
Nah, it doesn't make sense, no, Bob, it doesn't make sense, because we, as a district, we're not getting smaller, we're getting bigger. And, and we're considering a 1,500 square feet building with the lease, which is way, way more than we need. And, and so we're looking at a 9,000 square foot building. To me, that's, it's about, it's adequate, it's adequate for our, for our needs.
Well, I never thought we'd take the whole 15,000. I thought we were going to try and-
No, there is no part and parcel of it. It's, it's, take it or leave it.
Wait, 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 wait. Is that true?
What?
They will not allow us to sublease?
I didn't get an answer on that.
She didn't get an answer on that.
Why, ask the lady.
You're making an assumption.
No, I asked the, I get an answer for no for everything.
Well, we'll have someone nicer answer.
We are, we are not, we are not in that business to be leasing. That has got risk written all over it. If we don't get it leased and subleased out, we're up to creek without a paddle.
But it still doesn't matter, even the sublease, it still doesn't matter, because the cost of the building-
Doug, he's talking-
It's going to continue to go up. Oh, I'm sorry.
Anyway.
Okay.
Okay, Doug, say it now.
No, what I'm saying is, even if we sublease, it's still, it doesn't, it doesn't solve the problem of the building, the permanent building. That price is still going to go up, so even if we sublease and, you know, we, we save a little bit, it, it still doesn't, it, it doesn't offset the, the total cost of the new building, which we will need to build a building. There's just the risk and the equity piece is just, it doesn't make sense with that leased building, and I'm not a big fan of it being connected to another building. There's just, there's a lot of things, so, this is just going to come down to an individual and what we think is, is individual and collectively at the board, what is the right thing to do, based on the impact to the residents and the benefit to the community.
I'm sorry, the letter of intent did say that we could sublease.
Yeah, it says it.
Yeah.
We can sublease?
We can.
Yeah, it says sublease.
Yeah, sorry, I got it late last night.
The one that we got this morning.
Yeah, that I sent to you, I forwarded to you guys this morning.
Okay, so we could sublease, okay, that's all I wanted to know. Well, you know, the last meeting, we talked about another 3.6 million, I believe, for ponds for the coming year. We've got this great Raftellus change, or what's the meter thing called?
Meter replacement.
Meter replacement, I mean, that's going to be millions more dollars. We've got a lot of things we're spending money on. They're not getting, you know, the ponds are not going to go away, that's going to keep growing on us. Where do we ever cut? This isn't optional. We are here today, we are living today. We don't have to spend the money. Would we like to? Well, absolutely. But at a much lower cost, I would support it. Cut the building down, I would probably support that, it's just too much money. I'll be quiet.
Okay, but we do have a motion on the floor, I just-
Well, I made that, yes.
I want to give you the respect that you have.
I made, I made the motion that we take the, we accept the lease.
Okay, I'll second it. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any discussion anymore, no? I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
If she fails.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, okay. Oppose?
Aye.
Aye. I did. But Doug, are you opposed or?
I, I'm opposed to the lease, yeah.
I would go ahead, then make motion and proceed full speed then with the awarding of contract to the base bid of OAK for the building.
Building alone.
And proceed with whatever paperwork we need to do to get that, that project going.
And bring the contract back to the board for, for the mortgage. Do you have a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, let's all in favor, say aye.
Discussion, discussion.
Hold on, we have, many discussions?
The five, just so I'm clear, the 5.7 million does not include the additions for the RV, and there's some, also some extra cost for Tetra Tech and things, is that true?
The 5, 5.7 is purely the construction cost. The soft cost, we've identified somewhere around 6, 8, 6, 9 million, 6.8, 6.9. And that includes $175,000 of contingency.
So that's what we're looking for?
Yes.
Yeah, and again, for clarification, the motion is to award the base bid to OAK. That's correct.
That is, that's the motion, yes. And to proceed toward financing, securing financing to do so.
No, I thought we already had that.
That's what, we're still having the-
That's what Chelsea is-
Going through on the enterprise. Everything else appears to be clean.
Any other discussion?
No, I'd just like to know what the real cost is ever going to be.
Open 6.9 million or less.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. No more discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
No.
No.
Motion passes 3-2.
There's those Pelican people running up the tab over here when they don't have to pay for it.
Okay, what else?
Do you wanna?
So.
So we're not.
We took care of that audiovisual deal.
So we're not constructing the park? We're just doing the admin building?
That's the only motion that we made.
That was the only thing.
We separated.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'll make, is it, is the idea to go ahead and, uh, is it applicable to make a motion on the park?
Yes, it is indeed, it's 11D, so that's what we.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to proceed with the, uh, the second piece of the, uh, of the bid for, uh, to, uh, is it O, OAK as well?
Yes.
Yeah, to OAK for the, for the park addition.
Second to motion.
So, so for clarification, the motion is to award alt bid to the ultimate bid for the park.
Correct.
Correct. So we have a motion of, and I have a second on the floor, open for discussion.
Did we ever get the survey of the Pelican residents, whether they supported the park or not?
Have not gotten that out yet.
I'd like to table that motion until we have that greater input. Is that a motion to table?
I don't know how you. We have a motion, we have a motion and a second.
It's called for a vote for tabling the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to table fails for the record.
Okay, any other discussion?
Maybe he's calling you to give you another property.
Denny Grimes.
Pumpkin pie.
Oh my gosh.
Denny Grimes.
Danny's got a deal for us.
Don't go this route.
Probably got another property there. I, I take the call.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a motion and a second on the floor with no further discussion. I'm gonna go ahead and call the vote. All in favor, say aye to award, do I have to remind you a little bit? To award, okay, OAK, uh, the 2.5 million dollar, um, bid for the parks. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so Doug, are you opposed or you're, this is a delay, um, so you're in favor?
I was, I was in favor, in favor, yes.
He made the motion.
So opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
These penny pinchers in Pelican are opposed again.
All right. Okay, now we're gonna go to.
You once made the comment that if 51% of these people don't want this park, I'm not voting for it. And you just did.
Not, not gonna get any better.
You just did.
Not gonna get any better.
I'm just.
What does not gonna get any better mean?
I will remind you.
Audio.
Oh, I'll remind you.
Audio and visual.
Let's keep moving.
The next one is the change.
That's included, it's a part of the project.
The change order for the Commons Park Plan and Administration Building, this is change order two, let me get to that for you, it's for Tetra Tech. Uh, this does not include CEI of the park, or of the building, I'm sorry, of the building, because Holmontes is going to provide it of the building and, um, Tetra Tech will do the remainder. Sorry, struggling Laura is normally the one driving here.
What, what are we looking at right now?
I'm getting there.
Audiovisual stuff for the new building.
That's what I thought.
This is, this is Tetra Tech's contract, I don't see.
It's a change order, hold on.
Well, can we do, can we do the audio and video and then do that?
Sure.
Well, I have a tweak with the audio video. Um, do you wanna go to the audio video while I'm scrolling? I can touch it real, touch on it real quick.
Well, I thought we got cleared at the last meeting that the, uh, uh, cost on the building included the, the FFE, I asked the question, was that 90,000 or whatever it was included and you said yes?
Yes, no, 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 no. That is a direct purchase on my budget numbers, the 6.9 million, that included the FFE.
That's why, that's why I meant, yeah, that's what I thought.
Yes.
So I don't, I don't have any issue, I just wanna make sure that it's included in our cost estimate and not another 100,000.
I just wanna, um, touch on, if we're gonna talk about the AV real quick, um, the, I got a, I got an email from our friend Jack Dempsey over in, uh, Pelican Preserve, made some suggestions, because he has cochlear implants, uh, and trying to upgrade our system to make them compatible with those implants. Um, I've since reached out to the vendor, it's like a $50 more to make that happen. Uh, so I strongly recommend we go with the amended Harmon's visual, audiovisual quote, which is just upgrading that, so it's compatible with those. It's not compatible directly with the hearing aids, but with the cellular device, which is the transmittal to the hearing aids.
Okay, Tony has it.
Of course.
Yeah, my only comment was, I provided that, uh, just.
The 50% deposit, we, we'll do.
Well, it says the deposit received by no later than December 5th.
Now, we'll give, issue a purchase order.
Okay.
And then when they receive material, we will submit payment for receipt, I've clarified that.
Harmon understands that?
Yes.
We have, we have an email from them with that.
So the.
Hi Laura.
The voice is.
Hi Laura. I've been listening the whole time.
Yeah, so the new.
I hear you guys picking on me.
I didn't say your name.
Laura, they were picking on her.
Yeah, no, I think that, that's important.
The new total is 99,551 bucks compared to.
9507, 99,507.
Yeah.
Yep, that's the key, as long as Harmon agrees to that.
Yes, they have.
Thank you.
So 99,551.
Okay, so you want a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to, um, award the.
Joe Kierman for the new.
AV to Harmon.
Yes.
At the revised prices articulated by the district manager.
I'll second that motion.
I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Opposed.
I just gotta clarify with Doug, if it was, so it's 4-1?
Aye, I'm an aye.
Okay, so it's 4-1?
Without Laura.
Without Laura?
I know, she's just not here controlling for me.
See, it's a lot easier for Chelsea when she just has to sit next to me and flick her finger and I have to do all the work, so now she knows what I go through.
All right, the next item.
Is that on the job trading here?
Yeah. Uh, the next item is the change, change order two for the Commons Park Plan Administration Building, so this is 128,000 dollars, 128,780, um, and this is for, um, construction phase services for the park and the building.
Does not include resident inspection, just construction services.
This is for.
Or does this include inspection, because I thought they were.
Construction phase services.
Change order inspection.
Yes.
Not, well, we, I thought they did not have the ability to do the inspection.
No, you'll have, you'll have, for the bill, so they do for the site work, but not for the building, and that'll come to you at the next meeting, because Holmontes.
So this is for everything but that?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, what is this?
Change order two.
Change order number two.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, change order number two.
How powerful, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Nay.
Motion passes 3-2.
I didn't hear Doug.
Doug, are you, you got your nay?
Sounds like it fails, didn't it, to the support?
Doug? What happened to him, we lose him?
He's still on.
He's still on?
Yeah. Oh, he fell off, he just fell off.
The motion fails.
The motion fails.
Okay.
But there's nothing they have to do between now and December 5th anyway.
That's it?
Um, for the revised, again, for the everything that you brought, yes, that's it.
Yeah, go ahead and do supervisor comment, I'll start with Bob.
I love all these 3-2 votes, that's all I got.
Carol?
Yeah, um, I'm assuming that we have not hired a third person to work with Russ to develop a methodology, correct?
Correct.
Huh? Third person?
Not, a second.
The second for us.
A third opinion, second, yes.
Second opinion.
I was gonna say, we got three now? No. We haven't hired him, I think the, uh, Pelican Reserve hired him.
But the last the board directed was for, for staff to go and find another one.
Correct.
And the one that we did find pulled out, since then, we've been trying to get in contact with another one, as you know, it's limited resources in the state of Florida, with PPCA hiring Fishkind, that was the one who taught pretty much all of these folks. Um, so we are still trying to make contact with Carrie.
Carrie Garland.
Carrie Garland.
Who also used to work with Fishkind.
Yes.
And in fact, did some work previously, I believe.
Is with Fishkind or what?
Was.
I believe he was.
I think everybody was.
Russ had, I think, I believe Russ had his contact information.
Yeah, so we've been unsuccessful in contacting them.
So is it possible that staff could talk with Mr. Fishkind and see if there was a, is a way that he can work with Russ?
Yeah, the direction of the board.
What is being like a, uh, the same thing that Jones was gonna do? Same thing Dr. Jones was gonna do?
The second source, yeah.
Somebody needs to, somebody needs to, that, the, the committee over there has already hired, hired that Fishkind, that's kind of puts us in a position, if they would withdraw their hiring of him and then he would be willing to.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approach Fishkind on a contingent, that he withdraws from the Pelican contract and works for us.
And he would be basically like Jones was a.
I don't know what Jones is, but.
Okay, the only thing, only thing we got, only thing we got then is, uh, we need to run that by, uh, Russ, get his opinion on that.
Well, that's why I asked if staff could look into that. Um, we've got a couple of weeks now till our next meeting, see if it could be worked out. And if there's some reason it can't, okay.
Well, I, I got the issue or the opinion, talking to the Pelican Reserve people, that they were wanting more out of Fishkind than just a, an opinion, they wanted a separate report, is what I gathered.
I have no idea.
From the people.
I don't know what they negotiated.
But we wanted a second opinion.
From Carol.
We wanted a second opinion.
Is that they, they, it wasn't a second opinion, it was a second report.
Okay.
In other words, it was two, two different reports.
Well, what we wanted in the.
But I think.
It wasn't that.
We wanted a second opinion.
Cynical opinion, okay. After reviewing the report, so, so.
Go ahead.
But the reality is, we wanna come out of this with something. We don't wanna have one report from this guy and one report from this guy, and then you fight over one's and one and one's with the other.
So do we have Russ finish and then provide that to, to the guy that Pelican has hired and then get his feedback to the board?
That's why I think it'd be a whole lot better if they could work together.
Well, but barring that, and I agree with you Carl, but barring that, let's make contact with this other party.
So I just wanna be clear, what I'm, what I'm asking him, because this, what I asked of Jones was that when Russ would, Russ would come up with what he is presenting to the, to the board, I would send whatever you got in your packet to Jones or to Fishkind, what would now be Fishkind, they would review it basically and give feedback at the same time.
That's what I gather.
With possible alternative.
With, with either agreeing or disagreeing or coming up with alternatives to Russ's method.
Well, I specifically like to see alternatives if available. If they're not, deny it.
Okay, so that is.
Yes.
What I am asking of Fishkind, and then, um, so if, if he's acceptable to that, it's contingent upon him withdrawing from representing the community association and then we would need a contract.
Make sure somebody, we're, we're going into what the community told us they wanted, this is a, this is a flip-flop, I'm gonna make sure that the people that hired him over there understand that he's not going to be doing a full report, he's going to be giving a second opinion. It's a lot different, because the size of scope of the project is gonna be.
Like, why don't we, why don't you reach out to Pelican and see if they're willing to do that?
And Ed, I take exception to your saying it was just an audit, because I made the motion in the meeting over there that was carried, and it was going to be a second evaluation. I don't know where you came up with this, it's just a sanity check.
I met with Carol and Tom and Fay.
That has nothing to do with my motion. My motion in the meeting was that we, the board, get a second opinion, period.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, then that's all we're asking him to do.
Well, my problem is, is if we go to Fishkind, we're going over what they.
Now, different, different issue, Fishkind does what Fishkind does, which is to make a second report, and if he can do that without a problem with Pelican Reserve, then we do it. If it would in any way compromise what he's already engaged in, then we walk away from him and we pursue the third person.
What, what in my, in Carol's perfect world, what I would like to see is where Russ comes up to something like, he says, okay, I just came back from, he calls up Fishkind, just came back from the meeting and they wanna know if, if they can do this over here and do that over there, but Ed says that we can't mention that word interconnectivity, is there anything else, any other method, any other something I can, I can, and they talk about it, you know, well, did, did you think about using the, the ABC method?
See, that's a second opinion, that's a second opinion.
CD, you know.
I don't have a problem with that.
And he said, well, you know, then this one would, I would have to have arterial roads, you know, as opposed to, blah, 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 and I would like to see.
Work together.
This working together now, rather than waiting at the end and having a 3-2 vote of, you know, somebody wants this formula and somebody wants that formula, that's not gonna help us.
That's the whole idea of a second opinion, is to try to avoid that.
Okay, well, the one thing I don't want the second opinion to be is, he added two and two, he got four, that's correct. That's what I don't want. I want the fact that he did two, but I offered him two, two and a half, two point three quarters.
So you're looking for separate.
You're looking for a separate report.
Absolutely.
So then we're back to them letting Pelican do their own way and then.
So and then we proceed with Carrie.
But that doesn't change the fact we have an obligation to get a second opinion.
Which is with Carrie, go ahead Tony.
My, my concern, I don't know how far down a path Dr. Fishkind has gone with regards to any data analysis, suggestions or approaches that he's provided to his current client, and how that would affect his ability to have an enter into a contract with the district. I don't know what was asked of him by the residents.
Tell me, everything that we've done is public, so everything that Russ has put out, we've, we've gone through, what do you call it, uh, store owner management, we're now through roads, so it's on the, on the deal. It's pretty clear what Russ's plan of action is and where he's doing. This would be something that if I was Fishkind, I'd wanna be looking at as going along, and if there is something that, hey, stop, stop the presses, there is an alternative here, I've got a solution. That is what a value engineering would do.
Again, I don't disagree with that. Again, I don't know what he was asked to do.
They told me, and I'm only going by what they told me, was is that he is doing a totally separate independent, uh, value engineer, or, uh, assessment methodology. And to me, that, that does exactly what I agree with Carol on, is that now all of a sudden offers the opportunity to have a report here of X and a report here of Y, and now we have to go hire somebody to pick, do we go with Z or do we go with X or do we go with Y?
Just, so, to be clear, so you're asking me to approach Fishkind or Carol Brocky? Or, because?
You don't want.
Or both?
Well, Fishkind, wait, if I'm Fishkind and you call me up, I'm gonna say I've got a contract already, so that's, that's problematic for Fishkind.
I mean, what, hey, what, what I was, what I was thinking about when this whole thing came up, I was only looking at it for benefit, having, uh, I thought it would be in Pelican's best interest to have someone evaluate benefit, not the assessment methodology, I was only looking at benefit, and if there is a perceived benefit, what is that, what would that percentage look like, and how would that impact assessment? I, I never really was even thinking about having someone to come in and do it a completely separate assessment methodology.
I, I don't.
To me, that doesn't make any sense.
I think you're totally right, I think maybe the committee over at Pelican did not understand or see it that way.
I'm the one that made the motion, I know what I motioned.
No, 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 not, not you, I'm talking about your, uh, committee over there that, what do you call it, uh?
NBCA.
Carol's.
NBCA.
Well, I think they're, well, the Residents Alliance.
The Residents Alliance.
No.
They're the one that hired Fishkind.
It's a combination of residents alliance.
Yeah. But anyway, I don't think they were looking at it as a second opinion.
Okay, so let me ask you, Bob, do you prefer that we go to Fishkind and ask if they're willing to do, to willing, no, no longer to do a full report, but that, but you made that motion, that's what you're trying to say? And kinda work more on what Carol was saying?
I'm kind of open, but I definitely want an independent report or second report.
Okay, so then, so then we'll have three, so we'll, we'll-
That's fine.
We'll may have, let's do both and let's, let's approach Fishkind, Carol, via Carol Brock, and see if they'll be willing to work with Russ. We'll take it in slowly, so we work together. And in addition, we'll still talk to the person, Carol, for a full separate report.
I don't think there'd be any harm in approaching.
Right? Do you agree with that? Do you agree with that?
You know what, and if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out.
Cause I, I have no idea what-
I mean, cause my, my point is, unless we feel like Russ's methodology, like if the, if, and if the Pelican folks, if they feel like they can't follow Russ's assessment methodology where it is today.
Face on the ground, people.
If it's directionally correct, I think where the conversation, it falls back on, even from today's conversation, is benefit and percentage that should be applied to the assessment. That's what, when it comes down to the-
You get the kill on the head, that is the issue.
Yeah, that's the issue.
Benefits.
Oh, oh, yes, I have no doubt about Russ's integrity and the professionalism with which he'll do it. I just want a different perspective, that's what I'm trying to do.
And I don't even have a problem if they look at, you know, Tetra Tech's benefit findings or, or Russ's perceived findings. I don't even think it has to be conducted blindly. I think you can even have someone say, look, this is what, you know, has been determined so far, do you agree with this? Uh, and are we missing anything? You know?
Alright. Thank you, Doug. Okay, Carol is done. Uh, I'll go to you, Doug, you have any supervisory comments?
I guess you have.
No, I mean, I-
Chelsea?
Claire's mine.
My com, my comment is this, you know, I understand Pelican's position on some of this spending. Um, but, you know, I think, I'm pretty proud of the fact that, you know, we have made a, uh, we've approved the building and the park. Yes, it's a little more expensive than what we, you know, we had originally planned, but I think it's gonna be great for Gateway. But this is where we have opportunities as we continue to move forward, you know, to look at, uh, areas to save money and, and cut back and, which is what we've said we are always trying to do. But things are expensive right now and we have to do sometimes the hard things that are, that are, uh, that are a little more expensive. So I just applaud the board, I know it's not easy and, and I especially applaud Pelican, even though they voted against. I think in principle, they kinda understand what we're trying to do here.
Alright, thank you, Doug.
I did have one other question, Flo. Uh, I got a note about feral pigs. Somebody at Stony Brook.
Feral pigs.
I, I don't, do we have a position on that?
It must be up at Stony Brook.
It was, it came from a Stony Brook president. But we've had him in Pelican too. We keep telling everybody we don't do anything.
The response that I gave to them was similar to what we do with iguanas, unless they're damaging district assets or property, we don't address them. We have, has in the past, put traps on, on the FPL easement.
Still have one, yeah.
But if there's, if there's complaints in their community, their HOA to contact their HOA, which I know that she did and the HOA already replied and said that they were gonna do whatever they had to do within their private property.
Okay, I just didn't see the response to the question, I just-
Yeah, they were, I think they emailed all the board members and so I think I just replied and had Flavia on it.
I think they're frustrated with the answer and the response they got from their HOA.
From the HOA.
Well, that's the same thing with our people.
Yeah, I think that's the issue.
And we generally have the golf courses as a buffer. But the pigs ran across, the golf course went to the lawns.
Which is where they live.
Yeah. Daniel offered to, uh, to address the issue if he, if it needed.
Well, it's, it's, it's interesting that where they're located is about the only habitat left for them is the old dump.
Well, and-
And that's gotta be where they're at.
A lot of, a lot of the construction along 82 is probably, I know like in my neighborhood, I have been in my-
Stern them up.
Yeah, certain, and they're moving, they're migrating.